Perfect. Thank you, everybody, for coming. It's nice to see everybody. We have a lot of guests, so I would like to get this moving and call the meeting to order if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Carol, roll call when you're ready.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin. Don Carmichael.
Here.
Kara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kukarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, we note all members present. A quick review of the agenda. We will have an invitation for public comment, limiting each comment to three minutes. We are looking forward to District 128 Safety and Security Presentation, followed by the Student School Board Representative Reports. We do have a FOIA request that we'll review, and we will move on to celebrate some good news. In our Consent Vote Agenda, which is items that are routine that we normally approve in one motion, meeting minutes, employment employees, educational tour requests, bills payable. These are things that we have discussed extensively in committee and will approve in one motion. Are there any board members wishing to remove anything from the Consent Vote Agenda this evening?
No.
Seeing none, it will remain intact. We'll move on to number four, Discussion, where we will discuss our first reading of some board policies, as well as some financial projections for our strategic plan. We will have a Financial Year 23 Midyear Review. And then items for action are listed. I'm not going to read all of them. We will discuss those individually before approving. And then we've got some items. Number six, for information, we'll have a Superintendent's Report from Dr. Herman. We will share some board comments and events from some learning and events that board members have attended. Do we have an IASB report tonight?
Yeah.
We have a brief report from ISB. See Dole? No report from See Dole tonight, so we will move on to E, any other reports that we might have. And then number seven, we'll discuss future agenda items. We will be retiring to executive session to discuss employment of an employee under Section 5 ILCS 120/2C1. When we move to reconvene in open session, no further action will be taken. So I'd like to invite anybody wishing to address the board to the podium for public comment. Looks like we do not have anyone going once, going twice. Do we have, we no longer have email public comments, so I am moving right on to our District 128 Safety and Security Presentation.
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
Thank you. Well, we'd like to present to everyone here, to the board, and to our student board representatives, just an overview of our Safety and Security for District 128. I want to introduce some of the people that will be presenting with me tonight. We, starting over there, standing up, Wayne Kincaid from the Village of Libertyville, School Resource Officer. Our Assistant Principals, Eric Morocher, Assistant Principal at Libertyville High School. Greg Stilling, Assistant Principal at Vernon Hills High School. Dan Mead, School Resource Officer at Vernon Hills High School from the Village of Vernon Hills. Also in attendance today with us, and they can help answer any questions if you have it, our Director of Campus Safety. And so Todd Williams at Vernon Hills High School, and Bob Ulix at Libertyville High School. Welcome. And so I will start just a overview of what we're going to talk about today. Crisis and Emergency Response Information, some of our building security measures, some of the technology that we have in our schools, some of the other safety and security measures, including school personnel, some of our proactive safety measures, and then some of the community resources that we utilize together to ensure our schools are safe. So, you know, really what drives... Oh, if we can move to Slide 3 there, please, sorry. The next one. So really what drives, you know, our, you know, campus safety, building and school safety, is really Board Policies 4170 and 4190. So those Board Policies are very general Board Policy, School Safety, and then it does refer to some of the requirements in Illinois that we follow, and we'll get into some of those requirements as we go through the presentation. And we, one of the things that we look at yearly is, first of all, we review the Board Policies yearly. The other things that we review are our Emergency Response Procedures. Our Emergency Response Procedures include a couple of things. They not only include the Emergency Response Procedures in the case of an emergency in the school, whether that's a fire, whether that's a lockdown drill. But some of the other things that we have in our procedures is, unfortunately, maybe a death of a student, you know, death of a staff member. And so that's included in our Crisis Team Information. So that's also important for us, and we review that yearly. It's reviewed by our team, it's reviewed by police and fire departments, and we get together yearly, a couple times a year. By law, we're required to get together once a year and review our safety, but we do meet a few more times. Back in September 2019, we also had an outside firm, Facility Engineering Associates. They came in, reviewed our procedures. They also walked through the buildings and looked a lot at our, you know, safety that we have in place in the buildings, and gave us feedback, and we, you know, did make some changes from that. So that was 2019. The other thing that we have kind of in the buildings, we have an Emergency Response Kit in each building. We also have what we call like a Command Center Emergency Room in each building that, that our phone lines will still work. There may be an old phone system. So a lot of things are digital now and hooked up to our computers, but if you lose power, that we do have place in our building that we're able to still operate from in the case of emergency. The next slide.
LHS Assistant Principal Eric Morocher. At both campuses, there are state mandated drills that the schools take part in. These drills include tornado drills, bus evacuation drills, fire drills, and lockdown drills. With regard to lockdowns, teachers at both buildings show a lockdown video to their students prior to the schools conducting the actual school-wide lockdown drill. These videos are required viewing for all substitute teachers, all out-of-building coaches, all out-of-building music teachers, and all students and staff to view. Each of the schools has their own lockdown video tailored to the nuances of that building. The specific video we're going to view is the LHS lockdown video.
Hello, my name is Wayne Kincaid, and I'm the School Resource Officer here at Libertyville High School. I'm going to show you the procedures for a school lockdown. For those of you who are unfamiliar, a school lockdown is a means of securing the building and its occupants from both internal and external threats. There are seven steps involved in a school lockdown. Step one, look into the hallway and bring in any students and staff. Teachers, upon hearing the lockdown alarm, you should check the hallways outside your room. Have those students and staff members in the hallway immediately enter your room and close your door. Please keep in mind that the classroom doors are default locked. Students should enter the nearest classroom that they are directed towards. In the absence of a nearby classroom, you should secure yourself in the nearest room as soon as possible, or leave the building if you are near an exit. Please keep in mind that if you leave the building, you may not know the location of the threat. Please exercise caution. If students and staff members are outside of the school when a lockdown has been initiated, do not make any attempts to enter the school. If you see the exterior lockdown strobes activated, leave the area until you've been notified by officials that the area is safe and secure for you to return. Step two, close the door and make sure it's secure. Please make sure that you pull the door closed. The FOB activated locks will only function for 30 seconds after a lockdown is initiated, which will provide the user a short period of time to open an already closed door with your FOB. Once 30 seconds has elapsed, all FOBs will be deactivated until after the conclusion of the lockdown. Step three, close the room's blinds. Closing the blinds prevents threats from seeing possible targets, both directly and by reducing the amount of ambient light inside the room. This also makes the room appear as if it is empty. Step four, turn off all lights. Like step three, turning off the lights reduces the chances of being seen by a potential threat. If a threat can't see you, the likelihood of harm is reduced. Step five, find the blind spot or safe corner of the room and away from the door. Staying away from the door and out of sight in conjunction with step three and four reduces the likelihood that you will be detected by a threat. It may also reduce your chances of injury should a door be breached. Step six, silence cell phones and stay off cell phones. Although you may be tempted to use your cellphone, doing so may increase your risk of harm and place first responders at disadvantage. It is important to silence your phone and stay off of them. If a threat can't hear you, it can't find you. Additionally, if a large number of people use their cell phones at the same time, it can overload the cellular network and obstruct communications for first responders. Please stay off your cell phones. Step seven, be prepared to blockade the door if needed, and be prepared to fend off anyone penetrating the room. There may be a need to blockade the door. There are many ways to do this, whether it is by placing furniture such as desks and bookshelves against the door, or binding the door arm with a belt. You should use whatever objects you can to blockade the door as effectively as possible. In a lockdown situation where a threat is present, the police will make effort to arrive at the scene and stop the threat as soon as possible. However, there may be a need for you to take action prior to police intervention. As a last resort, if your door is breached by a threat, you have every right to take whatever measures necessary to protect yourself. Use whatever items you have available. These items can include books, Chromebooks, staplers, etc. Protect yourself with whatever means you have at your disposal. Now that we have gone through the steps to a lockdown, let's review. Step one, look into the hallway and bring in any students and staff. Step two, close the door and make sure it's secure. Step three, close the room's blinds. Step four, turn off all lights. Step five, find the blind spot or safe corner of the room and away from the door. Step six, silence cell phones and stay off cell phones. Step seven, be prepared to blockade the door if needed, and be prepared to fend off anyone penetrating the room. I hope that this information was both informative and helpful. By following the proper procedures, we can greatly reduce the risk of harm should a threat arise. Ultimately, prevention is our greatest asset. Please notify LHS staff should you ever hear of any threats directed against the school and its occupants, even if you believe it may be a joke. If you have any additional questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your attention and be safe.
Slide six, please. During a drill like the one you just watched in the video, the school's IT department runs a live diagnostic on all doors, all door readers, all lockdown strobes, as well as many aspects of the system. Simultaneously during lockdown drills, the school's local police department, as well as the school's main office administrators, team directors, and campus safety team check an array of areas during and following the drill. During a lockdown drill, emails are automatically sent to all three schools and the district office, and driver ed teacher vehicles are notified of the drill as practice for an actual event. Again, as a safety precaution, all staff FOBs work for 30 seconds following the initiation of a lockdown and then are deactivated. Police FOBs are always active, so they have a full access to the building to protect its occupants. Following each and every drill, a feedback assessment document is set out to all staff to make sure that any issues or questions about the lockdown drill can be addressed.
VHHS Assistant Principal Greg Stilling.
Hey, everybody. We can go to the next slide, Bo. So as you can see here in the pictures at the front entrances of both buildings, we've installed safety bollards at the main entrances and alternative entrances at both buildings that would limit cars from either accidentally or purposely trying to run into the entrances of the schools. We've also installed a bullet-resistant safety film on the glass entrances and many of the first-floor glass, glass on both buildings to prevent someone from trying to shoot their way into the building, which you'll see a video of here that Bo is going to play right now. So as you can see from the video, that that slows them down quite a bit, which in that time, we're getting everybody in lockdown. Our friends from the police department are on their way, and now the bad guy doesn't know where we are when he does eventually get access to the building. So that's the purpose for that. The entrance doors are locked daily at the start of school. We have a two-stage entry system at our front doors that most of you have experienced when you come in. You know, this allows our campus safety team to first assess who the person is, let them in, and then before they get entrance into the building, establish who they are, ask for their ID, and then allow them finally entrance into the building once they establish that this person is safe and someone who we want in our camp, on our campus. Visitors who come to other doors can hit the security button that has a camera feed, so we can see who they are, ask who they are, and either buzz them in, or more often than not, just ask them to come around to the main entrance, so we can let them in there. Next slide, please. Visitors are checked in through Raptor Technology, which searches a national sex offender database and a list of local visitors that should not be allowed in our building. Once campus safety has established they are someone who belongs in our building, they're given an ID badge to wear throughout our building, so we know who they're, who they are. Next slide, Bo. Some of the other features we have at our front desk include a computer system with the cameras on it, so that, you know, campus safety can keep an eye on the building from the front door at all times. They also have access to radios that gives them the ability to communicate with our School Resource Officer, the team leaders, and school administrators for whatever needs we have.
VHHS School Resource Officer Dan Mead.
Good evening, everybody. So we have 207 cameras that monitor the inside and the outside of this building 24/7. We can watch the cameras from the security office or from the east and west entrances of the building. When needed, we can review the security film to see almost anything that's happened inside the building. The Vernon Hills and Libertyville Police Department have access to our camera feed and can pull up any film as needed for their own purposes. The camera feed can also be accessed remotely from computers or via mobile devices. Our outside cameras can help us monitor any activity or disturbance in the parking lots, the stadium, or anywhere else outside the building. Again, we can use video playback to review accidents or any other incidences that have occurred on our property.
LHS School Resource Officer Wayne Kincaid.
Next slide. All right, we use security signage to also help us maintain the safety of staff and students at Libertyville and Vernon Hills. That security signage includes no trespass signs, security video signs, required photo ID signs, and all bags are subject to search. All right, next slide. We use several security features. The majority of doors have KeepOps, all right, which is an electronic type lock. We've gotten away from the older locks. This is much more efficient. And as it was discussed in the video, after 30 seconds when going to a lockdown drill, it secures rooms for staff and for students. There are emergency call buttons in every classroom, all right? We also have a school lockdown is accessed in multiple areas, okay? And by those blue readers that was in the previous sign, those are lockdown readers that certain individuals can access and initiate a lockdown, right? There are more security features. We use a PA system, which was talked about earlier, with internal and external alarms and strobes. As you can see with the video here, once it starts, that blue strobe that's there, that is a lockdown strobe, okay? All right, we also have communication systems to staff and appropriate community partners. And we also use Securly, which monitors students' computers, and that helps out a lot when any kind of, they put any kind of keywords in, search words, it really notifies us if they're having issues or if we need to look at that student or call home student. And it's happened, I would say, multiple times throughout the year where myself the other officers here have had to contact parents at home, even on weekends or after school hours. So it does help a lot.
VHHS Assistant Principal Greg Stilling.
All right, both buildings employ full-time campus safety personnel. Todd and Bob head up those teams. They're located throughout the building and the parking lots, patrol the exterior of the campus. Many of them have experience as former firemen or have worked in area police departments. All members of these teams have ongoing training that includes CPR and AED training. Some parts of their ongoing daily responsibilities include monitoring the cameras, building entrances, restrooms, parking lots, the cafeteria, and other key areas of the facility. Our school SROs, you've just heard from them. Their goal is to provide a safe learning environment, provide resources to staff, students, and parents, and create and maintain positive relationships with the students. Their goal really is to reduce juvenile crime by helping students formulate awareness of rules rather than just catching kids in the act. Our SROs address these matters not only as law enforcement officers, but as mentors and guest speakers. They really work closely with the school administration in regards to safety and security. They frequently are guest speakers in classes and are just available to answer our kids' questions that they may have in regards to the law. Our SROs are parts of our Emergency Response Teams, Threat Assessment, and Crisis Teams. All right, next slide, Bo. The relationships built by school personnel is one of our really most important school safety initiatives. You heard Wayne say it earlier in our lockdown video. We encourage kids, if they see something or hear something, to say something. Both schools have learning support teams that build relationships with kids and help work, helped to work our disenfranchised students to feel better about their school experience. Our goal is for all of our kids to enjoy their high school experience, and our teachers are the ones in the trenches with the kids every day. They utilize the LST when they have concerns about a change in behavior from one of our students. We have a variety of ways they can report that concerning behavior to the LST and campus safety. And, and that's really how we prevent a lot of dangerous situations from happening. So that's that group there.
LHS Assistant Principal Eric Morocher.
In addition to the aforementioned and the more brick and mortar aspects of campus safety, both schools have a number of proactive safety measures. Both schools utilize an online bullying report located on the school's website. When filled out, these reports go directly to the Assistant Principals, the Team Directors, and the Associate Superintendent. The school's LSTs or learning support teams conduct weekly meetings regarding students, but the reality is the team members communicate with one another throughout the day, every day, and on a regular basis with other LSTs in the building. Staff can at any time send an LHS Help or VHHS Help email. This is an email that, when sent by staff members, goes directly to all members of all LSTs, as well as the Assistant Principal and the SROs at that given school. Both schools engage in restorative justice practices, as well as Green Dot LHS and VH Give at Vernon Hills High School. Another significant proactive area is the student participation in fine arts, athletics, student activities, and community groups. One of the best-kept secrets to both the schools are the school campus safety teams. These teams are consistently checking the perimeter of the building, entrances, hallways, as well as checking the restrooms to make sure that students are safe and they're secure. That said, they're also watching the affect of our student, students. Campus safety at both schools are out and about with our students and report immediately to learning support teams any signs a student might be in distress, anxiety, or could be, or could it present potentially abusive signs or that they're under the influence. Both schools' security teams do an amazing job at this. Additionally, several members of our campus safety teams are former law enforcement officers who are fortunate to have their expertise, knowledge, training, and care for students. Each morning, a member of the campus safety team reviews a summary of the prior night's and early morning's building activities, should there be any. The SRO, head of school safety team, and the assistant principal review the summary consisting of video and a written documentation each and every morning. Further, each morning, the assistant principal, SRO, and director of campus safety get a morning report of the building's exterior doors. The purpose of this is because during the winter months, and as the weather changes, the outside doors tend not to close properly, and these daily door checks let us know immediately, so we can have our building and our grounds team make any adjustments to the doors needed. As part of, as part of campus safety is making sure that our perimeter is always locked tight. Slide 20, please. Each building has a Threat Assessment Team. This team should not be confused with either the Emergency Response or Crisis Team. This team works together to assess threat levels of potentially serious situations should one arise, and this is an additional team that was developed in 2019 that will continue to develop as additional training evolves.
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
To review some of the community resources that we have available. Again, we do an annual safety review with our local police and fire departments and school personnel, and this again is required by our regional office of education. We submit all the materials to a regional office. And the yearly drills that we kind of, we covered, we talked about, those are in cooperation also with our local police and fire department. So when we are conducting drills, they're on-site, they're watching to see any, you know, anything that we need to improve upon when we're doing our lockdown drills, our fire drills, or tornado drills. So it's always nice to have them involved during our drills, so that if, you know, there comes a time that they've been a part of it and they can help us out. You saw the instructional video that we sent to our students and our staff. And the other thing to think about is that in a high school, we're outside quite a bit for driver's education, for outdoor education, for physical welfare, for science classes. And so we do have some procedures in place for those outdoor classes, and we try to review those. Sometimes during lockdown drills, students, you might find out, we may not do it at the same time. You know, of the day, we may pick a lunch hour, we may pick, you know, an odd time, because you just never know, you know, unfortunately, it's not always going to be during second period or third period that a situation may happen. So we do try to look at different times during the day, so that our students and our staff can adapt and be prepared. One of the other things that we have started doing is some tabletop exercises with our local police and fire departments. We conducted one a few weeks ago where we had representatives from both Village of Vernon Hills, Village of Libertyville, and also Countryside Fire. And we went through different scenarios, posed different questions, kind of changed the scenarios. We went to see how would we adapt. And I know the schools also will be doing, you know, tabletop exercises with their administration and their learning support teams. The other thing that you may not be aware of, we also open our schools up for some rapid deployment training in our buildings. Some of those happen later in the evening, and some happen on the weekends that we allow them, the Village of Libertyville and the Village of Vernon Hills, to utilize our buildings to practice. Part of it, it's good for us. They get to know our building, especially maybe staff that don't generally work during the day. They work evenings, but they may have to come into the buildings and help out. So they get to know the, you know, the buildings a little bit. And also, they do get to go through their drills. So I did apologize. I forgot to also introduce Deputy Chief Halla Betts from Vernon Hills. He's here as we go through. Again, really like to thank, you know, Village of Vernon Hills. The community support that we get from Libertyville and from Countryside is phenomenal. What we're able to do in partnership, being proactive, is very helpful. And when I talk to other schools, I think what we get from our community is far and above a lot of other places. So we are very lucky. So the drills that we do out throughout the year, we do have some appreciation, some outreach programs, you know, for all of those community partners. Part of it is to get them into our building so students see that the people that we work with are really good people and that they can reach out to them anytime for help or answer questions. We really want to build that partnership. So I really would like to thank all of them. And now I'd like to open it up for any questions from our board and anyone can answer, or I may just point at somebody to come answer your question.
We appreciate you sticking around for some questions. We do understand this board tends to ask really great questions, and there might be some that for security reasons or other reasons, you can't answer in a public setting. So with that in mind, I'll open it up to the floor for any questions from members.
Board Member Carol Benjamin.
I just wanted to refine how a lockdown drill is initiated. So I realize you explained there was, there are, are maybe like poles or handles within the hallways set up around the buildings. Are those all throughout the buildings in certain places? And you said certain individuals have access to unlocking them and pulling them to initiate the lockdown. So is that pretty much administration and our SROs?
So that's a little different than a fire pole station, a fire pole station. Anyone can go and pull the fires, you know, if they see a fire. In a lockdown situation, there's only certain people. So our administration in the buildings, our campus safety, and our school resource officer have access to those pole stations. Those pole stations are at all security desks and stations in our main offices and then other key locations around the building so that, you know, for example, if we're here, we can get to those, you know, pretty quickly. And then that's initiated. So when you, it's actually a pole station. When you pull up, an alarm will go off that nothing has happened. That alarm is so that people aren't just, you know, flipping, you know, the thing up all the time. But, and then the FOB is what actually activates it.
Thank you.
Board Member Don Carr Michael.
So we don't know that our doors are open or closed? We have to actually physically go around and check them?
Our system knows if they're open or closed, but we also go around and check them and see if there's any abnormalities, you know, throughout the day.
So they all have position switches on them?
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
And if you look at, just take, for example, Vernon Hills High School as compared to Libertyville High School. Libertyville built in the fifties, Vernon Hills built in two thousand. The difference in the number of doors, and you'll see even in newer schools that the number of doors and accesses keeps decreasing. So at Libertyville High School, unfortunately, there are fifty-two exterior doors, and at Vernon Hills, there are a lot less than that. That, you know, just, huh? Mid-thirties. So, but even if you go, so we're going from fifty to thirty, and then newer schools have even less access.
I also have a concern that there's not anything that I saw in the presentation that indicates what we're doing to ensure buy-in. Most of the cases where violence has occurred in high schools have happened because a door was left open or an interior door that normally that should be locked was left open. I know that when I was a teacher, I had an outside door, and on a beautiful day, I had my door open. That would never be allowed now. Like, do we have an active process where we look for buy-in? Or we teach buy-in? Do we talk to the teachers about what happens if you do leave that door open?
Yeah, I would say that we sent out quite a bit of information, whether it's through email. Now, so not just at the beginning of the year, but there are reminders throughout the year. And then when we do a drill, there is the feedback portion of it also. So in a drill, and I've participated as somebody that walks around during the drill, we take notes on what's happening or any abnormalities. And then Eric at Libertyville and Greg at Vernon Hills collect those. And sometimes they'll have individual conversations with teachers, with staff members, not just a collective email, hey, you need to do this. We'll go and follow up with, you know, individuals if they do see concerns. That's the other reason, too, with why campus safety does walk around during the day. If they do see something out of order, they will bring that back to the team, and then we'll have those conversations. And I would say that our teachers, staff are excellent during our drills. They give excellent feedback because they're also concerned about the safety of themselves and their students. And so, you know, to me, they do an excellent job of being proactive in that regards. And then also during the drill. And they do take, when you go through, if anybody ever wants to come to a drill, you can hear anything throughout the building. It is the quietest I've ever heard a high school when we operate, you know, the drill because you walk by classrooms and you do not hear anything. So I know we're getting buy-in from our students, and I know we're getting buy-in from our staff that they do take it seriously.
Thank you. And then just two other comments. I was really glad to see that it wasn't all hardscape. Like, I think that building relationships is probably going to be the biggest thing that allows us to avoid problems in the long run. Making our kids feel welcome, being sure that they're not being ostracized or bullied. Those are the things. And so I was really glad to see that that was a piece. And also, thank you. Just thanks for being there. Thanks for helping us. I appreciate what you do.
What other questions do we have?
Board President Lisa Hassel.
Thank you. I know that we can't do what we do without you doing what you do. The safety of every student, staff member, and visitor to our buildings is our number-one priority. So thank you. We know you take your job very seriously, as do we. These are the type of things that, you know, keep principals and administrators and teachers and students and board members up at night. And knowing that these things have been so well thought out and orchestrated and rehearsed by really seasoned professionals. Really, I can't thank you enough for the work that you do. Again, we can't do what we do without what you do. So, thank you.
Lack that. It lacks the applause at the end. So thank you, whoever started the applause.
Always good to have a round of applause. Moving on to item C in communication, I'll turn it over to our student school board representatives.
V H H S Student Dariel Schiffern.
Hi. This last month has brought a bevy of emotions from students, from finals stress to winter break elation. Vernon Hills' school-wide final survey sought to collect and identify these sentiments, especially as they relate to this year's final schedule. Seventy percent of respondents had a positive response to the final schedule, with forty percent of people responding positively to finals overall. Despite these positive overall metrics, most students rated their stress levels very highly. Though stress is not entirely surprising with most students taking over three finals, students expressed how they believe their stress levels could be reduced. The most popular request was for more provided study materials. Students expressed interest in engaging with more in-school review opportunities, with ten percent using the ARC as a final study resource. A contingent of students requested the ability to not attend school during periods when they did not have finals, shorter days, and more final days. Some students identified this combination fondly as one that they'd experienced in the winter of two thousand nineteen. Overall, students liked the final schedule, with some wanting a schedule that more closely emulated that of four years ago. The emotional state of Cougars has been the focus of staff members like Prevention and Wellness Coordinator Ms. Dillon, especially near finals. The highly-attended Fun Friday events and V H Give activities brought smiles to the faces of Vernon Hills High School students. Ms. Dillon highlighted the importance of shared happiness at school as a component of social-emotional learning and a semester-transition de-stressor. The decreasing of disparities in SEL is being addressed through increased activity offerings and the strengthening of existing ones. Spirit Weeks, club involvement, and student support groups were all brought up by Ms. Dillon as ways that previously-isolated students could better connect to community. The Cougar community is always changing, most recently marked by the departure of Sandy Martin and Ms. Katanzaro. Spending the last nineteen years of her time at Vernon Hills High School as Athletic Department Secretary, Ms. Katanzaro has impacted the school since her participation on the referendum committee that helped to build V H H S through facilitating athletic participation. Mr. McDonald described how she exceeded at doing all the little things behind the scenes to make sure student athletes would be able to participate in sports. Ms. Martin spurred the creativity of student filmmakers like myself over her years with the school. Lizzie Itell says that Ms. Martin was someone she could look up to and helped her believe in her ability to pursue film further. Christian Sarda recalls her patience in teaching him how to use equipment and her joy at club meetings. I myself owe a great debt of gratitude to Ms. Martin for bringing art and new skills to my high school experience, and I'm incredibly appreciative for her presence within the school. As a whole, this past month has brought joy, jitters, and gratitude to students at Vernon Hills High School as Cougars hit their second semester stride.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hari Jan. As students have begun to settle into the groove of second semester, there has been an abundance of activities and events. Concluding the first semester, on December twenty-second, Vernon Hills High School Chamber Choir performed at the Restolium. Mr. Little spoke of the experience and added that it is so fulfilling to see students take music and synthesize all the lessons that they learned over and over again. Mr. Little said that he hoped to set a joyful and calm atmosphere and that even for a moment, a person's hectic day could have a sense of tranquility. After a successful madrigal dessert, it was a sweet end to the first semester. Time is ticking until graduation day, and seniors are displaying a wide range of emotions. One of them is anxiety, concerns over completing necessary documents correctly. Therefore, on Wednesday, January eighteenth, the CRC offered FAFSA advisor meetings, providing the seniors with an opportunity to ask any questions regarding the FAFSA. Many seniors, like Abby Belson, utilize this opportunity, setting appointments during their lunch/free periods. Belson noted that completing the FAFSA has been an intimidating process, but she was able to get her questions and concerns cleared, and that Ms. Coveney even offered an additional check-in through Zoom, which instilled a sense of comfort and confidence in her, as well as in many other seniors. On January nineteenth, middle school students were introduced to the various academic courses and electives offered at Vernon Hills High School. Along with that, students were enticed with the various clubs that were offered. And while I spoke of choir at Vernon Hills High School, one student showed excitement, saying that there were so many different things and that high school seems like a completely different world. With Vernon Hills High School students advocating for their clubs and activities, this event was a truly fantastic opportunity for middle schoolers to get a taste of what to expect in high school. And personally, it was amazing to see our community come together in one place. As juniors start to shift their focus to college, there's a lot of buzz regarding which standardized test, SAT or ACT, they will take. As for the students that are focused on the SAT, the ARC tutoring program has begun their SAT prep study program, providing all students with the opportunity to sharpen up their test-taking skills by the help of their fellow peers. When asked, Mrs. Schwartz highlighted the role of the tutors, who, quote, "live out the ARC's 'we care' motto and create a welcoming and lively environment." While this program does take place in the morning, there's hot chocolate and tea as an incentive, helping students be calm while approaching the long and possibly dreadful reading passages. As quickly as it started, January swiftly comes to an end. The Cougars are back full swing, and there's always more to come. Thank you.
V H H S Student Sophia Marin.
Good evening. Over the long but necessary winter break, students united with families over ethnic and meaningful dinners as sons and daughters, cousins, and granddaughters. For many, it was an important time to reconnect with loved ones that perhaps were impossible to see during the prime of COVID. Others, like Junior Eunice He, embraced the time she could, she could to set new goals and spend time with family. Others, like Senior Raina Hill, said she simply enjoyed not having school and that it was freeing. Others, still hard at work, spent their mornings or afternoons at libraries trying to find their last round, trying to finish their last round of college apps. Or perhaps that was just me that did that. Regardless, winter break is now just freshly behind us. Like last semester, students like Senior Marisela Udebah are returning to their normal sports and academic routines, going to class, doing homework, and going to clubs. Now, in our third-week-back, clubs and sports and classes are fully back to running. Just a couple weeks ago, FBLA returned from a successful area competition where nine teams and individuals got first place and thirteen teams got second place. Wrestling is also returning strong, and with a record-breaking number of girls on the team. Now, there's around six girls participating, challenging the traditional idea that wrestling is just for males. In fact, wrestling is becoming increasingly less about gender. Junior Rishma Karchala, who is a first-year wrestler, decided to adventurously try it out because, quote, "where else would, would she get the chance to push people and it'd be totally fine?" Karchala said that it's a really aggressive sport, one where you may go into practice fine and leave it with two injuries, one that should be, quote, "more popular for girls because it is a girl's thing." Many students and clubs are setting their sets high after a semester of several projects and assignments. In our Latin American Student Association Club and the Chicas and Chicos Club, they hosted a Pachanga, where Hispanic and Latinx students united over authentic and ethnic foods, desserts, dances, songs, and games. Senior Jackie Gallegos, who attended the event, said, quote, "it's nice. It's a way to connect with the community. You see different people you otherwise might not see. I do think it has strengthened my sense of being and who I am right now." Additionally, in the Equity Leadership Team, groups of students and staff are researching strategies on how to effectively engage families in our school community and how students can easily and consistently provide feedback to teachers. Thus far, in the Professional Student Learning Teams and the Student Belonging Team, they've helped to create awareness projects to shed light to different, less-known holidays and a microaggression workshop for all the freshmen. La Cia Karchala, one of the many freshmen who found the two-day training session as very helpful, said that it gave her a deeper insight into the subtle forms of discrimination, which may be dangerously masked as a joke, though it shouldn't be. In addition to the Equity Leadership Team, there's also several other individuals who are creating new goals and new visions, especially relating to social media. Last month, I talked about how easily torn a person's self-esteem, sense of self or worth, can get when they're endlessly eagerly and helplessly scrolling through their algorithm-created and tailored feeds. This month, I sent out another survey, collecting over eighty responses. And the results were concerning, but not at all shocking. Among the surveyed students, there were about fifty percent of students that said they feel pressured to meet a body standard, despite knowing that a lot of the images on social media are photoshopped. Additionally, about sixty-five percent of students said that they've wanted to gain or lose weight because they felt insecure or upset about their body. Seniors like Rebecca Brumer, who's found herself comparing to the other people and lifestyles she sees on the perfectly crafted images and fake realities online, says that she wishes the school would, quote, "have more classes or courses where we learn how to take care of ourselves and self-care because that's now very trendy." There's real work that needs to be done, whether it's implementing a social media literacy class or heavier SEL implementations into classrooms. Not only will it help students, but it should also help the much broader community, which is battling all of the expectations and perfection displayed on social media. Overall, though, the school has been a place of a lot of productivity and work in the classroom and beyond in clubs, sports, and communities.
LHS student Sarah Wu.
Okay, good, um, good evening. Before we start, we just wanted to say, in, um, light of like recent national events and watching the presentation, on the behalf of all the students in D one twenty-eight, we really just wanted to say thank you for, um, you know, the diligence and dedication to our safety, um, by the board, by our commu- uh, campus security or safety teams, and just like the community, uh, because in order to take full advantage of, um, you know, our schools and, you know, in order to learn well, we have to be able to feel safe. So, thank you so much for, um, kind of providing that support and being dedicated to that. So, um, the report will begin with our sports. So, the Cats are rolling as usual. Winter athletes in basketball, bowling, gymnastics are working hard as peak championship season approaches. Our dance team is state-bound. Senior captain Liv Schiff said that, um, she is super proud of how her team has grown, not only in skill, but as a family. And she said, "we are giving our all on the floor, not only for ourselves, but for each other." I think this is a really common te- uh, theme throughout all of our sports teams, which is very awesome to see. Um, she can't wait for state because of the hours of work they've put in since the summer. Cheer has their sectional this weekend, and senior Abby Hayes, although she's been injured and hasn't been able to perform, is super excited to see her team, um, perform and hopefully make state. Um, in preparation for spring season, we have had open pools and open gyms for sports like lacrosse and water polo. Now, um, for just like the overall, you know, like feelings of students, seniors, um, senioritis hasn't fully set in yet, as most of us, um, are still receiving our college decisions. And, um, yeah, a lot of major early act results have come back. Senior Frida Montano, um, who is awaiting two more decisions, is feeling, quote, "pretty good." However, she does feel a lot of external pressure from her parents, and I personally can relate to this. Um, however, to combat feelings of stress, we have a great prevention wellness program at LHS. And one of the events that's actually coming up is tomorrow morning, which is the Third Annual Wildcat Summit. Um, I was actually so lucky to be able to lead, um, lead and organize this along with, um, Jeanette Jenkinson, Peter and Sophie Shalafow, and Leah Trudy, who are seniors. So basically, the summit is a, we have eighty-five participants, and it's periods one through four, um, where we have senior speakers talk about, uh, like how to lead healthy lives through focusing on having a healthy mind, healthy body, have healthy relationships, and learn how to have healthy discourse. And so, um, this was like completely student-led, and, um, I think it was just really awesome that we were able, we, we had like the resources, um, you know, cut to kind of like, and space to have this event, but, uh, we kind of had full kind of freedom and control over what we thought was most important for our fellow students to, um, to take from it. So, um, I am, we are definitely very appreciative of the resources that, um, students get to, um, kind of, you know, pursue, like, the projects that, um, that we think are important. Um, for the underclassmen, especially freshmen, uh, the, after like a normal semester last semester, as this new one begins, students are adjusting to, um, their new one semester classes, and they feel more at ease. Rishi De Party, a sophomore, um, switched teachers for her chem class, and that took adjusting and getting used to, but the teacher is nice, so it's not that difficult. She also said that, um, this semester, she's a lot more put together, and she's been getting more sleep and is getting better at scheduling and kind of organizing her workload, which is always good to see. Um, a freshman named Grace Jackman agreed with this, noting that she now knows how to handle the retakes that our teachers have and like quiz corrections and just staying on top of everything. So I think, um, students have finally gotten used to the retake policies that we have and are generally feeling positive about them. Um, freshman Sophia Jackman noted that she finally knows her way around the school, which I feel like us upperclassmen kind of take for granted, but yeah, they're finally getting accustomed to that. Um, however, some freshmen don't feel this, um, sentiment because a freshman that I interviewed did say that with finals over, she has less motivation this semester and feels like she doesn't have to try as hard. So, speaking of finals, we have, um, we also sent out a survey, and Jazzy will speak about those.
LHS student Jasmine LaFida. Yeah, so I wanted to do a deep dive into the results of this survey for LHS students. So first off, we have the, around the number of finals that LHS students had. So around thirty-one percent had four finals, which was roughly the average, and twenty-nine percent of students actually had finals split over two days. So they would have to go to one class beforehand and then have like a couple days break and then finish off the final on another day. Um, and most students had between three and five finals, but there were still a considerable amount that had upwards of six or seven finals. And speaking to stress levels, this was definitely the most concerning part of the survey. A majority of students rated their stress about finals as an eight on a ten-point scale, and there were very few students who rated their stress, um, as one to five on that same scale. So, a vast majority of students were incredibly stressed about finals. Um, almost fifty percent of students were, did say that they wished that they had more materials that they could have been provided with to help review for finals. And thirty percent did say that they wanted more days of the finals to reduce stress since having only the two-period day could lead to students having upwards of four finals in one day, which is a lot to handle. Speaking to study strategies, or ninety-five percent of students used past study materials to review, showing that when teachers organize review materials early on, their stress really can be reduced. And most students spent seven to nine hours studying leading up to finals. I think that I also fell in that range for sure, and so did my friends, so that was around the average. Um, and then certain opinions about in general finals. Almost seventy percent of students liked the final schedule this year. Like I mentioned before, there were some of those outliers, and that is something to consider, but it was, a majority of students did like the way that it, um, that it ran. Sixty percent of students were actually neutral about finals. They said that it was neither a good nor a bad experience, and forty percent of students were actually happy with how finals went. And some students also submitted anonymous recommendations for fi- for what we could do to change finals. So, the main one that we got was about having m- more days for finals. We also had, um, like especially having three days instead of two, so that way students were only taking, um, a maximum of three finals in one day. Another interesting one was make teachers required to have a certain amount of class final exam study days to correlate, to make sure that students are actually getting an accurate amount of time to study and that they know how to study for finals. Um, one student mentioned that they really liked the long lunches and that they appreciated having that time to go out and relax and also get some studying in. I remember on the day of, the day, the second day of finals, sitting around with my friends at a coffee shop just reviewing for one big final that we all had, and that was really nice to be able to do. Um, one student did mention that there should be a deadline of when teachers should stop teaching materials before the finals, since some teachers were still teaching right up until the day before. So it made studying for the final difficult, since it was testing them on materials that they had essentially just learned and didn't have an act, didn't have an adequate amount of time to study it. Um, and also, one comment of a student said that it was unfair, that some students may have had five-plus finals, but other students had only like a couple finals. And one comment that I frankly agree with very strongly is that having no finals for second semester seniors with an A in the class, since that, I know that's been the policy in the past, but I know that all of our final policies are under review. Some students interviewed also commented that a finals plan for AP students who take AP exams in May should be communicated to classes early on to pr- improve preparing in the class. And I can definitely echo that, because I know that my experience in AP Physics C has been a bit rocky with like the, on, with not knowing the final schedule. So, I would say that that's definitely a big one. Another thing that happened at LHS recently was our eighth-grade orientation, where link crew leaders and NH, and NHS volunteers welcomed eighth-grade families into our school. Students were able to watch a presentation in the auditorium led by other students on the high school experience. The main gym also hosted lots of clubs and sports teams to increase involvement and help students find things that they're interested in. And lots of students, like Sarah and Fatima, actually helped lead tours for different families and answered many questions. Another, um, interesting thing that's been happening is tomorrow, I will actually be, um, sitting in on interviews for the Spot of Career and Technical Education Chair. And I just want to say, I really appreciate how LHS does care about student voices enough to invite students to sit in on these interviews and provide feedback, and I'm really looking forward to it tomorrow. And?
Uh, I also did that last year as well for the Social Studies, um, department chair, and I thought it was a really cool experience. Um, last year, also, John Graham, which was a previous board member, was able to join me in that, and it was so cool. I was invited by Dr. K, and I just thought it was really nice seeing my voice being like helpful and like involved. So it was a really cool experience. Thank you. So, to some, so clubs are starting to kick off, and, um, junior Vanessa Zhang has started her pilot club, ChemCats, as she wanted students to change how they felt about chemistry in the classroom and just make it more interesting. And she says that, um, "I want to bring in new people and engage them with science and really put a fun spin, spin on chemistry." I really agree with that. Definitely starting to go to the club. They showed a really fun video in all the classrooms yesterday, so everyone's really excited about it. Um, February is Black History Month, and LHS is doing a lot to commemorate black activists and history in the United States. So, Black History Month Museum is on February second, and it's being held in our library for students to come in and look at it. And, um, some clubs and classes are participating by creating content to celeb- celebrate Black History Month. For example, Interact, which is our community service club, and I helped lead it. We're, um, we're on a mission to create pieces to shine light on black philanthropists from our history and some people from like frats and sororities and shed light on that. And the school is also organizing a Unity Lunch for students in all lunch periods to show a documentary about black history. So a lot of people are really excited for that. Student Council is currently en- entering our Shine Season, and Shine Season is when we shed light on underrepresented clubs and activities. So, this year, we're incorporating Shine Season into our winter dance to highlight students, staff, clubs, coaches, everything. So throughout February and March, Student Council planned a Shine Tour. And throughout, uh, this is an initiative to encourage like classes and students to visit and attend like sports events and theater plays to support their classmates and just be in the audience and highlight their hard work and be there and show their wildcat spirit. And, um, staff and departments will also be highlighted in a funny video to be presented at our as- assembly, so we're really excited for that. So, Interact, which is the volunteer club I previously mentioned, we're bringing back our chemo care bags initiative, which we do in partnership with our Medical Cats Club. And this just shows support and love to cancer patients undergoing chemotherapy at the Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital. We just make little bags with like goodies and like fun books and things like that. And we received so many letters from patients on how our hard work brightened their days and like added so many smiles throughout the hospital. So, we're excited to start that again. So, Best Buddies is our LHS chapter of the National Best Buddies that creates inclusion by allowing students to be paired up with other students with disabilities to create new friendships or buddies to support each other positively. Senior Sophie Shalafa, who's on their leadership board, says, "We're very excited for Best Buddies Carnival to make its return after COVID. It's a great way to bring together students with disabilities throughout Lake County to celebrate and give them a glimpse into the ways we can carry out the mission of inclusion. We invite LHS staff and their families and the Lake County students with intellectual and developmental disabilities to join Best Buddies on February eleventh, from eleven to one in our main gym. There's gonna be so many games, inflatables, pizza, photo booths, everyone's invited." So, they're really excited about that. They're also partnering up with LASSO, which is the LHS Latin American Student Organization, and they're gonna lead the LHS Best Buddies chapter into, like, learning how to do bachata, sorry, merengue and salsa on Thursday. So, Sophie's really excited about that, and she just thinks that partnering with other clubs and teams expands their circle of friendship and encourages new connections. And, um, finally, theater. Um, so our freshman and sophomore play, which is called Puffs, is gonna be happening on Janu- the, I think this weekend, January twenty-seven, or Saturday, Friday and Saturday. And the story is based on Harry Potter, to the li- our Harry Potter-loving students. And it's managed by the, um, senior Chris Montero. Freshman Olivia Venus described the experience as "super fun." As someone who, as someone who knew one person at first, I now made so many new friends. Everyone is super nice, and Mr. Thomas is a really great director. I can vouch for that. We all love Mr. Thomas. He's a really cool guy. And, um, the winter play, The Rose Tattoo, is being put on from February tenth to the eleventh. And senior Bethany Klump said, "The play is about a silicon wom- woman who's left devastated after her husband's death and her relationships and finding hope of new love." She says it's so crazy. They're really excited about it. And, um, senior Socio-Hagopayan will be playing Flora, and she says that preparations are going great and the play is looking amazing. So everyone's really excited. A lot of events are kicking, coming up, so we hope to see some of you guys there. Thank you.
Board President Lisa Hassel.
Thank you. Great job, guys. Any questions for our student board reps? Okay, thanks, guys. Um, moving on. Uh, for your request.
We, we received one FOIA request, and it was from, uh, Sydney Ryan from the Lake County Federation of Teachers. And the request was for information regarding our district's workload plans for special education staff. So they were specifically looking for worksheet formulas that we use to calculate workload for each educator, be it classroom teacher, psychologist, social worker, other things like that. Um, we, uh, the responsive records were, um, uh, collect, collected in seven and a half hours, and we emailed the response back in December thirteenth. So that was our one oh.
Great. Thank you for taking care of that request. Sounds like it took quite, it was quite a project to respond to.
It was, yes, that, almost a full day. So that's a, a big request to make sure, um, not that we don't have those things already, but making sure that they wanted the spreadsheets that we actually use, so, um, yeah. Um, Kelly Hartwig did a fantastic job responding to that.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Kelly. Um, and now, one of our favorite parts of the evening, good news.
Yes, and we do have some wonderful news to share. Uh, Vernon Hills High School has been named one of three hundred state finalists in the thirteenth annual Samsung Solve for Tomorrow competition. We're receiving a twenty-five-hundred-dollar prize package. Solve for Tomorrow is a national competition that challenges US public school students in grades six through twelve to explore the role science, technology, engineering, and math can play in solving some of the biggest issues in their local community. The Vernon Hills Project, My Life, is an app that helps Vernon Hills students make their lives better, more connected, and more rewarding. It can help students find clubs, get the support they need, and help them organize their lives. Continued use of the app gives users free credit to be used at our DIY vending machines created in the Engineering and Advanced Computer Topics, Science Topics class. The art and logo in the apps and vending machines were supplied by the Fine Arts students. Students in this, involved in this project include, uh, senior architect Liam Angelos, art Grace Tao, Stephen Dong, and Alyssa Malloy as advisor. Engineering is Andrew Ossenchuk and Brian Miller as the advisor. And for Technology, Dimitri Shor, Rahil Seth, and Ad- Adam Lukin as advisor. So again, wonderful things going on in the area of STEM.
Fantastic.
Um, we also have two groups that have been recognized. First, the Libertyville High School students, who are named as December True Wildcats. Danielle Maraca, Julia Bennett, Cole Karazakos, Katrina Christophilus, Scott Creel, Grace Backcheck, Kendall O'Brien, and Theodore Smith. And in a similar group, we have Cougar Class Act Awards going to the following students. Kevin Batista, Hannah Bush, Yancy Lim, Gabriel Sardo, Willow Bartlett, Sarah Besser, Annette Doarty, Ju- Jason Davida, Tanner Papernik, Erin Griffin, Jeffrey Brahms, Kwame Ray, Jenna Saho, and Harry Ostrom. And finally, our, our last bit of good news is to remind all of the people in the library here, as well as all of the people listening in, that the D one twenty-eight Foundation is hosting its fourth annual D one twenty-eight Day of Giving. Um, and, um, it will be starting this coming week. Uh, one twenty-eight is on a Saturday, so the foundation decided to have it start and span three days, so Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Um, the annual campaign showcases the work that has been done by the foundation, including daring innovation grants to support, um, again, exemplary teacher innovations, um, money for students in need, as well as recognition for the, um, Alumni Achievement Awards. Please help our foundation meet its goal of twelve thousand eight hundred dollars on one twenty-eight, um, during the campaign that will take place. Um, it will be an online, um, opportunity. Um, Mary and many of the people on the foundation will have lots of videos being shown. lots of videos being shown, lots of live shots and you know, it'll just, it'll be a very exciting a couple of days. So hopefully we'll meet our target.
Please follow the foundation on all the social networks. But Mary does such a great job of donating her time to support.
And that's all.
Fantastic. So we'll be looking for ways to give to the foundation who supports the innovation grants and student in need fund. Through that day of giving this Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And we can find those links all on social media.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Fantastic. Then that brings us to number three on the agenda, our consent vote agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So moved. Rooney, so moved.
Batsen second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Batsen.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Holcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries. The consent vote agenda is approved. Moving on to item four, discussion. First, we'll start with board policies. This is the second set that includes sections six and seven for our first reading that we discussed in committee.
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
Are there any questions on this? Second set. So this is the set for section six and seven that we reviewed at the last program and policy meeting.
Board Member Carol Drumke.
I do have a little. And I, as I was reading through the policies in 650, it does, it's about the food plan. And it asks if we have an unused food plan. And I was wondering if that a part of our contract with Quest?
Board President Lisa Hassel.
So board policy 650, that's school wellness.
And. Section, I just had in my notes that we would ensure that there is a school. Page two.
Page two halfway down under unused food sharing plans. There it is. Thank you.
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to Quest and it also says collaboration with the local health department. So let us, I can get back to you on that one.
Board President Lisa Hassel.
Great. As a discussion for a first reading, that's a good catch and we will, we'll bring that back for further discussion.
Yeah, these, these will be discussed again at committee next month and then up for a second reading and adoption next board meeting in February. So we have some time.
Any other questions about this first reading that we discussed in committee? Okay, moving on to the strategic plan, financial projections.
Superintendent Denise Herman.
Sure. Dan prepared this agenda item, but I just wanted to note that this is in response to a wonderful conversation that we had at the P and P meeting about some of the action plans that are coming out of the strategic plan. And the board's request to have more of a complete picture of some of the expenses. So they don't feel that things are coming at them one at a time. So our team rolled up our sleeves and made sure that we pulled together all of the action plans and Dan, Dan put it together in a very useful series of tables. So turn it over to Dan and thank him for that work.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just probably brought the data together. The whole DLT really added all the information there from the different strand leaders or the, the leaders for the different goal areas. So what this is an attempt to do is to give you as full of a picture as we can of what else? And when regarding the strategic plan. And so we walk through each of the objectives. So there's, there's summary report levels there that shows you each objective and just the foreseeable caught the best sense that we have over the next five years. I would remind that these are estimates and just because something's in a very particular year doesn't mean it's absolutely going to happen in a year. We don't really know. But that's our best guess based on right now. And so then even beyond the strategic plan, one of the questions of like, okay, well, what else beyond the strategic plan? We did our best guess to try to give you a sense of other things that we're aware of that are on the radar over the next five years that are important to take into context as well. I would say the, the one thing that probably was the weirdest looking one is the capital needs that are listed there. That, that's just meant to be a a snapshot of what my best guess is for what are probably going to be the top four or five projects that eventually come out of prioritization. To give you a sense that like, all right, these are some operational things, but then this capital needs thing is a, is a one time thing that's going to come up in the next five years for sure. So.
So the 13 million is not for strategic planning. That is capital improvement estimates.
Called other very intentionally. So you're not going to find it mixed in with that. But yeah, so there, and there's a few other things that are listed there that are on our radar as well.
Can you give us an example of what a couple of those things might be?
Oh, when you, which couple of things?
In that 13 million, the capital.
Yeah. So you have, I believe, a detailed report that'll, that'll give you an idea. No, oh yeah. So yeah, you'll have a detailed report. So this would include like cafeteria, science labs, library, things like that. So that's a sense.
Stuff we've been talking about already.
We've been talking about that we're not, we're not done going through this prioritization process, but once we are, I would be surprised if some of these things aren't on the top of.
Board Member Carol Drumke.
So Dan, can I ask a question? As we're looking at these figures, many of the figures are, I mean, I the way I understood it is we are kind of allocating things we have already spent. I mean, we've always had a PD budget. We've always had a workshop budget and a materials budget. So are these new costs or are these costs that we would have spent in general? But now we're allocating it under one of the prongs of our strategic plan.
That is a great question. And that is one that it's hard for me to specifically answer. There are some costs in here that we already are spending, but it'll just get diverted. So I think a lot of times when you see meetings with subs and things like that, we have subs now and just instead of them meeting in action planning for the strategic plan, they're going to be, different people are going to be meeting to do the action plan. And there might be different people. So there definitely are some costs that overlap with something we already spend. But a number of these things are in addition as well. So it'd be difficult for me to parse out exactly what would be additional versus what is just a reallocation of something we already spend.
Was your question, just to be clear.
Well, I think it's, yeah, for, for the numbers that we're seeing, I mean, like the capital output, the 13 million. Is this included in the typical four million that we spend every summer? This, I mean, these are.
That would not be, no.
No. Okay. So these are.
Yeah, that, when you're talking about the other category, but in a lot of the, the detail for the different, the three, the three goal areas for the strategic plan. Depending, especially when you're talking the, the cells with the bigger numbers in them, those are, those are new.
I saw it also as a mix, but like when I saw the PD numbers and the technology numbers, especially the PD and the materials, these are things that we would have bought anyway. We are just allocating them under whatever prong they fit in our plan.
For some of them, yes, but for some of them probably not. I, I think it's a mixture. But that's my, that's my best, that's my best sense.
I think we already have a very vibrant professional learning program for our teachers and there's only so much time in a day or in a school year. And so by saying these are our three goal areas, it's going to press a priority on wellness and relationship building with students and equity issues. And we've had those before, but this allows us to get even more focused. So I do think for these three goal areas, much of the PD is going to be a shift in focus and a refinement. I remember when the equity coordinators gave their presentation back in early January, they talked about wanting to have that whole continuum of professional learning for our staff. And that it's going to take a whole year to develop that so that at any entry point, I can be a beginner, have some moderate knowledge of equity issues or be very advanced. And we will still have learning opportunities to move our staff forward. So again, I think it's more that refining and focusing rather than a brand new professional learning.
Board President Lisa Hassel.
So this gives us a picture of both expenses that we would expect to budget normally as well as new expenses associated with the strategic plan. It's a combination trying to give us an overview so that we have a handle on the big picture. Which I echo Dr. Herman sentiments. I appreciate you putting that together, Dan. I realize that that can't be an exact science, but giving us some kind of tool to have an idea of what's coming down the pipeline. I especially appreciated, I noted that the biggest expense between now and fiscal year 27 would be the staffing for the Explore Multiple Paths. And when I look at the other goals, I can see some of their expenses, but they don't include additional staff. And that's a very helpful thing to see in combination with the capital improvements that we also have to make to keep our facilities safe and modern. So this is, this is a helpful amalgamation of all of those things. Both things that we would normally budget and expect to spend as well as new expenditures to support the strategic plan.
The Explore Multiple Paths number seems to jump significantly fiscal year 26, 27. Can you just share the vision of what will happen there as far as where those numbers were coming from when you were sitting and looking at?
Yeah. So some of, some of that comes from in the, in the objective for the Explore Multiple Paths, there was the district director role that was talked about in committee and on the Jennifer tonight. In addition to that, in the more detail in the objectives and further on, there was a, there was a part of the action plan from the committee is to look at building level coordinators for that level or that area as well. And so that's what you're seeing out in fiscal year 26 and 27. But again, those are, that's a long time from now. Those are estimates. And even if I recall correctly, part of what Dr. Sanchez mentioned at a previous meeting was part of the role of the director is to look at all of this and evaluate this. So none, none of, none of that is particularly set in stone, but that, that is, that is what I was trying to accurately reflect what is, what is shown in the action plans. And so that, that, that would essentially would, what those numbers mean is one building person in 26 and then two, so one, one added in 26 as a building person. And then another one added in 27 to have two, one at each building. So that, that's what those numbers changing are.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And again, I think that goes to implementing a successful program will grow that much and needing people to oversee some of the job shadowings and other things like that. So it would be dependent on student enrollment and student growth of the program.
Board Member Sunil Kalcarney.
I had one question. Last time we talked, we saw your presentation from Dr. Sanchez about the English learner requirements. And how we might think that might grow over time. Is that possible, all of that factored in here?
We, we believe that that's included under other initiatives under EL program that there would be a halftime position for the next two years and that potentially could grow to a full time after two years, but that still is a bit unknown for us as well.
That's included here.
Yes.
Because that.
Other, it's not included in those goal areas. It's not part of those three goal areas. It's included under other.
Yeah. Cause that might be one that we don't have a choice but to do. So.
Yeah, that's, that's a line item that's included for all five of the projected years.
Board President Lisa Hassel.
What other questions do we have about the strategic plan, financial projections? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the fiscal year 23 financials mid-year review.
Assistant Superintendent for Business Dan Stanley.
Well, we are past halfway through the fiscal year of 23. And so what I want to do is just briefly give you a sense of how is the fiscal year progressing. So halfway through the year. So ideally most things should be about maybe halfway received or halfway spent. So I want to give you a sense of what that is. I'm going to really just hit a few highlights that are really the, any major differences. The first one is CPPRT. So that is corporate personal property replacement taxes. That is essentially a percentage of taxes that we get from the Illinois Department of Revenue that is based on income from companies. And we get a percentage of that. Last fiscal year, we received more than twice the amount that we have ever received ever. And so then the big question was, was that an outlier or is that setting a new bar? None of the business managers really knew. And so we were, we wanted to be conservative and we're nervous to assume that we're going to get twice as much again. And so we ended up, we ended up assuming a lower number. Well, lo and behold, in August, we were notified that we are going to, we're going to get even more than we got last year. And so that means that that budget is off by 1.2 million dollars. So it is a lot of money. And even what we budgeted this year is, would have been the second highest we have ever received. So this is a bit of an anomaly. And it'll be important for us to try to understand this going forward. It's not supposed to be this volatile. That's not usually what happens with this. It's, there's some volatility with the economy. So then if, if the economy is heading towards a recession, what will that mean for the future? We don't really know. But what is very likely to happen is that we will end up with 1.2 more, 1.2 million more than what we budgeted.
And Dan, can I ask, I know because some of the funds that we receive have specified things we can spend them on. But my understanding is that's not the case for CPPRT. We can choose what to do with those funds, correct?
That, that is true for almost all of the money. There's a small percentage of the money that has to go into our IMRF Social Security Fund. Beyond that, there's no restrictions on the money. So the vast majority of the money, we're talking 98, 99% of the money, there is no restriction.
Right. So we could spend it, we could save it, we can invest it, we could use it for operating expenses. That's to our discretion. Thank you. Got it.
But just to clarify, it's not money we can depend on every year.
It is money we depend on every year. The question is.
In this, in this increase.
Yeah, this, this increases, I, I would say it is unwise to assume that you're going to get this much money every year.
For planning purposes.
Correct. I, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to depend on this money.
Yeah.
Because it, the volatility is too extreme.
Okay. So for ongoing expenses, too volatile to plan.
So that'll be an important thing. So when next, next month, when we're talking long-term financial predictions, it'll be really important. That's a really important number. Like what are we, what are we assuming is going to happen with CPPRT? Because that, that's really a big number. Well, relatively speaking. So that's one thing on the revenue side. Another one that you need to be aware of is interest income. Rates have been going up and we have already received more than I budgeted for, for the fiscal year for interest income. So just to give, so and, and I, I gave you a chart of the history to show you there's quite volatility in interest income because it's, it's largely based on the, the market, the market rates. And so we are in a very high period of rates. We are, December was the highest interest rate of our portfolio that we've had since I've been here. And we've been tracking this stuff. So it's significant. So my best guess right now is if the trend continues, we'll probably end up about a billion over budget on the, on that for interest income. The other, so I, that I really would say are the, the major differences on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the, what I, I think what I would level on is the important differences is teacher salaries. So teacher salaries is the largest line item in your budget. Right now, we are trending towards being over budget on teacher salaries by about $280,000. The biggest reason for that is drivers had overloads that the board is aware of. Other overloads that were, that was additional staffing that we added after the school year had started. So think of the EL overloads that we, we've talked about in a couple of meetings, those, that's an example of that. And then one was an error that we made on one particular teacher. We just misbudgeted their salary by a whole lot of money. The teacher's getting paid accurately, but we just, that person wrong number by a lot. And so that was an 85. And so that was an eighty five thousand dollar, um, error on the, on the budget for. Teacher salary. So all those together is, we're going to be about over budget on teacher salaries, two hundred eighty thousand dollars, which is not, not normal. We're usually very, very close on teacher salaries. On the other hand, ESP salaries is trending towards being under budget by oddly enough, another two hundred eighty thousand. So. Those are seemingly offsetting each other. That's the primary, that's primarily due to unfilled positions or open positions or somebody resigning and bringing somebody in that, or somebody retiring and somebody coming in. Uh, less than the, less than the other person was paid. Or, or we would have budgeted for a position to be the whole year, but they didn't start maybe until a couple of months into the school year. Uh, we still have some unfilled positions in the district as well. I don't think every single position we have is filled. Uh, and so based on that trend, that's where it looks like it's heading. The other one is substitutes. This is, this continues to be an area that is. Experiencing exponential growth in terms of, of spending. So we're, we're still experiencing absences. Uh, for sickness, COVID, we're still, um, the sixty day, uh, leave. Policies impacting that. Uh, meetings, strategic planning meetings, those are subbed out for committee meetings, things like that. Because there's not other time to do it. And so all those things are adding in, uh, to subs. So subs right now are trending. Are trending about a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand more. Uh, than what we budgeted. Which would have been. If that's true, then that's the most this district has ever spent on substitute teachers. Uh, so that's a significant, that, that's probably the fastest growing expenditure category, uh, in our district. Um, that's something that we, we need to. Pay some closer attention to and understand a little bit more. Um, everything else I would say is, is overall. Trending as expected. Um, this was a year that. We knew was going to be tighter. It's a deficit of one point nine million. And so, um, I think we have a lot of departments that are feeling the tightness of that. Um, and so we're trying to watch that closely and things come up, that things break that we have to pay for, that we didn't expect to. So those are ongoing daily, weekly conversations, trying to make sure we meet the needs of our departments. Um, so when you put it all together, our budget had a deficit of, operating deficit of one point nine million dollars. Part of the reason for that was our change in accounting for property taxes. So we knew this was going to happen. We knew this is going to be a one-year thing. However, based on the change in CPPRT and interest income. I'm anticipating us, we, I think we're trending closer to a small surplus of maybe a few hundred thousand. So if you take the one point nine million dollar deficit and think, all right, now one point two million up from CPPRT, and then another million up. From. Interest income and then down a little bit because salaries are trending a bit over. You're, you're really close to probably a couple hundred thousand over. So, uh, it's, so that, that's good news, right? You know, the other part of me is like, I, I want to be accurate. And so part of that to me feels like a little bit of bad news too. But I think the good news is things are. We're, we're, things are all overall on the revenue side, looking better than we thought. Expenditures are just a little bit worse than we thought, but I think, I think we'll be fine. I think the big thing that I'm going to watch for. Is if we are trending closely, close to over, to overspending our entire budget. That's something that. Kind of think about Congress and everything. They don't really have the legal authorization to spend more than what's appropriated. We have a similar thing here. So I'll keep watching that as the year gets closer. Uh, but for right now, right now, I think we'll probably be okay. Is my son.
Dan, do you feel like a lot of districts are facing that situation with substitute costs? Because of. Absences and COVID and things like that?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the.
Just trying to get it. It's not, it's not just us. It's the situation, a residual situation from COVID that. In, hopefully will.
For sure. I think other districts are doing that. I mean, there's, there's just a few things that are unique to us that are affecting us.
The parental.
But there are common things that many districts are, that many districts are dealing with.
And maybe others illness too. There's a lot of things going around this winter that.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, the one thing I hear is, you know, before you power through and you come to school and. You know, you have sick days and, and, you know, people will take those sick days. So, you know, there are. You know, times that I, I see that our absences are, you know, a little higher than normal and, and then with. The sub, substitute teaching shortage, um, sometimes we are doing internal substitution and internal substitution using our own teachers. Is more expensive than bringing in somebody from the outside all day. So. Hopefully when the weather warms up. We'll see.
And we appreciate teachers not coming to school sick and we do not want to promote a culture where people feel that they need to come to work sick. That's what sick days are for. And we want our staff to do what they have to do to take care of themselves.
On the topic of substitutes, is our rate this year, substitute rate for external subs? Similar to what it was last year?
We increased it, um. I think last year was the year we increased it a little bit. And. We haven't gotten pushback from our subs that were, you know, below, we are below some other schools, but then we're higher than some schools around us. Um, I think we're. Right there in the market. Our substitutes tend to, um, really stay at our schools. Like they don't. A lot of substitutes, they don't travel very far, you know, um, and so I haven't, you know, heard that we're falling rapidly behind other schools. I also don't want to get into where I know there are certain pockets in the county that, that people just. Schools raise it and the next school raises it and then they're kind of getting into war. And I don't want to do that and put. District seventy or sixty eight or seventy three that we're raising our rates higher and then. Their substitutes aren't going there. So I, I think we're in a good place and we've picked up, um, some more substitute teachers have signed on in the last, uh, month. So.
And pay is not the only reason a substitute teacher will work in a particular building. It's how we make them feel when they're here. It's what kind of supports we give them.
Yeah, five dollar difference, you know, i- is not the reason that they may stay with us, um, you know, for the day. It's that, you know, the feedback I get from our substitutes is they enjoy coming into our buildings. They feel welcomed by our staff. They feel welcomed by our students. They feel safe. Um, and we have a lot of returning substitutes, you know.
Board President Lisa Hassel.
Have you noticed any difference since the legislation has changed about sub requirements?
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
Um, we picked up a, you know, I, I mean, think we picked up some more subs, a few more. It's still not as many as it was, I would say, six years ago, the number, you know, of people there. And part of that, again, at the trickle-down effect. You have less educators, you know, um. There's less teachers, full-time teachers available. Um, and so that's going to affect your substitute teachers and that's going to affect the amount of, uh, also staff for your support personnel. So, you know, really kind of when you look at it, when you have less people getting into education, that affects everything else in the schools, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. What other questions do we have?
Board President Lisa Hassel.
Okay, thank you again for compiling that mid-year review for us. Um, we are now to items for action. Um, and we begin with items that came out of the PMP committee. So I will turn it over to Jim.
Board Vice President Jim Batson.
The first on the action item here is actually just a, um, review of the closed session minutes. So, uh, this is a, a typical thing that we do every, um. Is it every six months? We have to review these, um, and determine if we're going to keep them as confidential. Retain them as confidential, which we usually do. So, uh, in this case, we have a, a list of, uh, closed session minutes that, uh. Is a recommendation to have them remain closed.
Um, Hassel, I would like to move that the need for confidentiality still exists for all current closed session minutes and those listed below and all shall remain in the closed file.
Carmichael, second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
I'm sorry, Sonal, did you have a question or kind of, okay. Oh, no, that's all right. Um, I.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Kalcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi. Motion passes. Uh, second item on the list here is, uh, board policies. This is a. Uh, an initial set that we've already had the first reading. Uh, we, earlier in the, this evening, we had a first reading for a second set. This is a first set that we had. There's about seventeen policies here. Um, many of them are, are updates because of, of legal references and things, but there were a few that were. Pretty drastically changed, but these have been reviewed in. Two committees plus the first reading at last month's, uh, board meeting. So, uh, these are up for, um. Second reading and adoption. So. We can have a motion to adopt these policies.
Drumkey moved to approve the seventeen board policy updated as listed.
Benjamin, second.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
Were there any other changes, uh, between our last meeting and this meeting?
No, there were not.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Kalcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. We have, um, an item here for employment of employees. These came in since our committee meeting. Um, so they're, they're listed there and, uh, just need a, a motion to, uh, to accept these recommendations.
Carmichael moved to approve the employment items listed that occurred after the PMP committee meeting.
Rooney, second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Um, I just wanted to comment. It's really nice to see internal people or people that are returning to us. I know Denise Fuentes is an existing employee. Um, from the Vernon Hills CRC who's taking, assuming a new role. Is that correct?
She, she, she was here, um, in our CRC and she, uh, left. Um, to take another position at a college and she is returning to.
And we are very happy to see returning employees, both for Denise and Kyle Harwin, who was. Um, an accounting honors teacher that my son had, really enjoyed him. He left to pursue another job and also came back to Vernon Hills High School. So I think that says a lot when we have people leave Vernon Hills High School and come back. Um, because it's a great place to work. So thanks, John, and to your team for creating an environment where employees, uh. May set out for greener pastures and do tend to come back. So.
And I, I like to recognize, we do have a resignation on there of Margaret Nicholson. Um, she is taking a position as a science department chair in Maine Township. So, uh, congratulations.
Congratulations.
To Maggie on taking that position. We are sad to see her leave Libertyville High School, but we are happy for her that she is taking on a leadership position.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hassel.
Hi.
Kalcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Um, we have a request for a Director of College and Career Readiness. This again was discussed in committee. Dr. Sanchez, do you have any quick background you want to present here?
Yes, um, in addition to the board memo, Bo is going to help me up and he's going to put, uh, I promise it's only four slides. Um, that I put together around the legal requirements that we have to comply with from the Illinois State Board of Education. You can go to the next one. Thank you. So the first one covers, um, the career pathway legislation, which was signed into law in May of this year. And so it requires that we have at least one endorsement area beginning with the high school graduating class of twenty twenty seven. So that is our incoming freshman. Um, and, um. Subsequently, we have to have an additional endorsement plan by twenty twenty nine and a third one by twenty thirty one. And we have to submit an application by July first of twenty twenty five. And then in the next slide, um, you'll see what the, the recommended path for learning is. And so you see how it starts with at least two career exploration activities or one intense experience at our freshman and sophomore level. Unfortunately, we don't have a path established, so our incoming freshmen will not have this experience at the ninth grade level. So we were, we will have to squeeze that in to their sophomore level so that we can meet the deadline of. The graduating class of twenty twenty seven, having had the opportunity to have one career pathway to choose from. And then we look at the requirements for, um, junior and senior year, which is when we, um. Have to have the sixty hours of, um, an internship or an apprenticeship or, um, just on the job experiences. As well as the team-based challenges that we still have to develop. So we're a little. Behind in terms of meeting these deadlines and expectations. And then the next one, Bo. Is the legal requirements around the PACE framework. So this is, um, an instructional framework that we have to, um, use and we have to have a plan set in place. To begin implementation in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. So we'll have. Two school years to get ready for the implementation and use of this, uh, PACE framework. It's kind of like a standards for college and career exploration.
Board Member Casey Rooney.
And the, the activities that our current career development centers don't meet. These requirements, correct?
No, we have one global capstone and that's for the, the scholar global capstone. We, we have to develop them.
Develop more? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so the global capstone does not count as a, a college and career, um, pathway.
Okay.
A, a pathway is like a series of, of courses leading to. Specific knowledge in a certain career path, as I understand it.
Yes. So for instance, um, I'll give you the example of the district I, I live in, Woodstock, Illinois. They have a. Teacher education career pathway. And so they developed a partnership with McHenry Community College and a lot of the teachers, um, that are teaching at the high school. Are able to teach dual credit classes. So by the time the kids graduate as seniors, they've completed their associates. And then there's a partnership with Aurora University, who happens to have a campus in Woodstock. And the, the kids will then transition into Aurora University. And they can, um, finish their bachelor's in less than four years and finish the student teaching usually by the third year. And so they are well on their way to being teachers by the time they graduate high school.
And what a phenomenal pipeline for teachers, which we desperately need.
Yes, they, they did a good job. Um, and so it is those experiences. So for instance, the sixty cumulative hours of. On the job training, um, we would have to develop partnerships with local organizations to make sure that we have those, um, for students. So we have some work to do.
Those are the endorsements that are referred to.
The pathway endorsements, yes.
In the law. Okay, just for anyone, including myself who's listening, that didn't quite understand what that meant.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, in addition to the presentation and the board memo, I included, um, some, I addressed some of the questions that you, um, you all presented at the PMP meeting. Uh, which was what are our other surrounding districts doing in, in terms of, um. Administration support. And as you can see, they all have, uh, district level administrators. The only. The one that doesn't is the Grayslake High School. They have one CTE department chair. Um, so when I, um, spoke to, to Gina, it, it. She does the job of a director, but it's not called that. And so she doesn't have, um. Department chair responsibilities like evaluating the teachers or, um, those types of things. And then this year they added a career exploration and internship coordinator who only does the. Who's, so responsibility is to focus on those, um, on the job experiences for students. Um, I also added a category that addresses the job responsibilities that are new, that are, that we are currently not, um, not addressing. And then the ones that our current CTE department chairs do, do.
Board Vice President Jim Batson.
Okay. Any questions, comments on that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm looking at the, the jo- uh, job description. Do, do these other districts have metrics around s- some of this? Like some of their positions, meaning how many companies do they reach out to? How often? They're expected to present these opportunities, things like that. I mean. Maybe I'm, I'm thinking of it in terms of private company, but.
You're just wondering how, how to measure the success of.
Right. How are we going to measure the success?
How many students, how many tiers?
Right.
Uh, how many pathways? Um, what, what are the metrics?
And their milestones, like after the first year, where are we? After the second year, where are we? Because you're not going to do it all at once. So are there milestone metrics? By the first year, will we have this accomplished? By the next year, will we have this accomplished?
Right. So, so the, the plan is that we have to meet the endorsed pathway endorsement guideline. So by twenty twenty seven, we have to make sure we do have one established pathway. So that's a metric. Making sure that we have two for the class of twenty twenty nine, making sure we have three for the graduating class of twenty thirty one. So that doesn't mean that we start them in twenty twenty nine. That means. For the students that will be graduating that year. So for instance, the graduating class of twenty twenty seven means next year's freshman. So we have to have some of this work. Started way before. So we have to have some of this work started way before the, you know, 2029 year or the 2031 year to make sure that like the incoming freshmen have one pathway to choose from. And then also like monitoring enrollment, that was on the strategic plan update, is we'll want to make sure that the enrollment is growing in each of these programs.
I think that one of the things that would be helpful is Bryant and Yacenia work collaboratively and drew from existing job descriptions from these other schools. So there, it's very much the best of, the language that's used in the other schools. I think, I appreciate that kind of job description that you're referring to. Unfortunately, that's not a common practice in education right now.
It's not a common practice in corporate either to include metrics by which you're going to be measured in a job description. But I understand the question, even if it's not part of the job description, once you through it.
Right.
One does wonder, how are we going to judge? How are you going to judge? How are you going to judge if this person is successful in their role? And I would say the thing that I brought up in committee that I'm still really stuck on, and I'd like to hear both Dr. Herman and Dr. Sanchez comment on. I am not okay with somebody that does not have direct experience developing and implementing and monitoring a program like this. I have so much respect for the people in our building who might be, have transferable skills for this role. But I'm going to have a really hard time approving a contract for somebody who does not have direct job experience in a high school setting, developing these programs. And you showed us a list where we have many peer districts where we have, we are really behind many schools that are offering fabulous programs for all of their students. And I'm sorry that we don't have anything quite to that level yet, but we should be able to find someone that has experience. And I would ask that that be prioritized when we do get to the point where we're looking for candidates. I'm not going to have an easy time approving the contract for somebody that does not have direct experience doing this job.
Yes, so we've listed the CTE endorsement as preferred, but we can make it a requirement.
I think what I'm looking for goes beyond that.
Experience, yeah, not the endorsement, yeah.
And I think, you know, when we look at candidates for any position, you look at the big picture, the whole picture of that candidate. So you look at their skill set and what they've done in the past and experience. Also, you know, do they have the ability to also improve on what they're? We don't want somebody to come in and just, you know, not, I guess, get better into that role. So somebody that can grow into that role. But there are other schools that have, you know, this position. Some of them have two positions and maybe that, you know, the person that they have in, you know, their role of the, I'm just kind of looking like a career exploration specialist, who's maybe below their director at a school. That might be somebody that, you know, has experience and is working and that we may be able to, you know, draw to, you know, our school. So we will definitely, you know, reach out to all of our contacts and look at, you know, people with experience and take all of that, you know.
And you do a phenomenal job of sourcing. And as somebody who has a background in HR, I understand what you're talking about, where you want someone to be able to level up and grow into the role. There have been other contracts for administrators that we have approved for somebody has transferable skills but has not worked in the role that they have been hired for here in the district. This is not one of those roles where I would be inclined to approve a contract for somebody who doesn't have direct experience, even if it's not at the director level, working on the development and implementation and monitoring of this type of program at the high school level.
Board member Sonal Calcarney.
I agree, because this is setting up something very foundational. You know, will have a long-lasting impact. So I think that, and to kind of address what you were saying, Casey, maybe part of your job responsibilities, you need to add that this person is going to develop metrics and monitoring and to ensure that it's tracking to what we expect it to. That's, you know, you see that as part of job responsibilities.
Board member Cara Drumkey.
So I do have a question, because it's changing the framework of how I'm seeing this. Are you saying now that every high school in Illinois will not be in compliance with ISBE unless they have some kind of a role like this by their graduating class 2027?
It's not the role is that we have to have these career pathway endorsement programs, yes.
It's not, it's not the role, but that we must have the pathways and they have to create some kind of a program that will offer these pathways.
Yep.
Someone in an organization needs to be responsible for that task.
Right, and I think we're all in, I know myself, I am committed to seeing this happen. And this has been a part of, you know, what our plan is. But I also, and I respect the recommendations that were made by the committee that did this deep dive, that is included with teachers and different stakeholders. I respect all that and I want to honor that. But I feel that I also want to respect the climate, the climate and culture survey that we've received that has said to us, said, we have had a lot of change in a very short time. And this is another huge change. And we have, I feel like we are going from zero to a hundred in one year, when we've kind of given ourselves over five years to see us be at a hundred. I also see this as more top-down as opposed to grassroots. I mean, that's kind of where I was coming from and it might be too simplistic. But I was hoping that we could see some development from the bottom up to an enough buy-in and enough success that we go, hey, wait a minute, this program is working enough. Now we do need a director. It's not that I am opposed to this position, but I think we have moved so fast, so quickly. We have not given ourselves a breath with the director of equity and, you know, to say, hey, wait a minute, let's see what we can develop on our own with the resources that we have to need this, to justify this.
Maybe I'll throw a couple of comments. Having lived through this and doing this where I work and having created a director position and all this kind of thing already. I think a couple of comments. One is, we're all, we're behind the curve. We have, is requirements by the state to have these programs in place and we're not there. And we need to have them in place very quickly. So if we're moving quickly, I think we're moving quickly because we're being pushed to move quickly. And the fact that we haven't had enough resources to focus on this program has put us in this situation. So I think it's not, and, you know, you can look back and hindsight's always 2020, but we're in a situation now and I think there's, you know, these are not simple programs. These are not things that you just piece together. These have requirements by the state. And so I think there's two things at play. One is, you know, the state, ISBE is really pushing to have these things in place, starting in the fall, for those freshmen coming in in the fall. The other piece of this is, a major component of our strategic plan is multiple pathways. Multiple, really to trying to encourage our students to look at multiple pathways as they progress through our district and as they progress into life and what they do after school. So I think there's, there's a lot of energy coming together that, you know, that's going to push this program forward. Some of them are absolute requirements that we have to meet. And I think there's just a lot of work there. And I think it would be, in my opinion, it would be short-sighted to not give it the resources we need to jumpstart this thing quickly, that we're now, you know, behind our area, other area schools. And will put us in a position where we're playing catch-up for a while. And I just don't think it's, it's wise to short-change that process at this point in time.
And I think your concern is a good one. I would love to hear the administration's take on whether or not we do have the ability to use our existing resources to develop the programs that we're being asked to develop.
I'll start, and then I know Yacenia has worked very close with both CTE programs.
Because we have, just to clarify for the public, anybody who might be watching, we do have CTE full-time, full-time CTE positions at both buildings?
Well, they're department chair, so they teach two classes and they also oversee a group of teachers.
Got it.
And compliance grants and other things like that that go along with the CTE program. One of the things that I would describe our program as a very vibrant and high-quality classroom-based program. And so we have, we do have some very clear course sequences where you can go from a beginning to an advanced. What we're missing in our program that state is now requiring is that work experience and having kids not just think about an internship, but make sure that we are from freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, helping them construct that knowledge and make meaning. So whatever they do decide to do for their sixty hours, they, we've set the stage for that to be a successful learning experience. Right now, our department chairs, they already participate in some of the P20 networks. They participate. They have been advocating that we move forward with this position for many years. This is something that we foreshadowed last spring when we brought other positions, saying, we know this is coming. We just want to make sure we know where it might fit in the strategic plan and then we'll bring forward the details on it. So I also just want to remind people that when we were looking at our organizational structure and saying, what do we need to move forward with what we see as being expectations of the state? This was one of the positions that we had foreshadowed. So while it is, again, new, it's not something that is, we hadn't predicted that we would need. And in terms of the, one of the reasons why a lot of districts are finding success having it be one person at the district office is because you then have one point person for all of the businesses in your local community. It can be, like, when you have two people, they sometimes call the same people, assume the other person's going to call that, that when you're doing community partnerships, they've said that it's pretty essential that you have one point person and it actually is more efficient in our use of staff because they're building one program in terms of community-based program. It will still be the department chair's job to make sure that the coursework is aligned and that the teachers are still, you know, being as innovative as they ever have been. So have been, so we see this as building on the foundation that we have. But our department chairs are already working very, very hard, as are the teachers. Teachers who teach in CTE have multiple preps. So it's not just one or two preparations. They're prepping for three or four different classes usually. So, you know, the challenges that they face already are quite high.
Well, this, I'm sorry, just to follow. So would hiring a district-level position like this affect the leadership opportunities at the building level then? Those people that are currently doing it in the building, is how is that going to affect their position?
I don't, I think we see some of the responsibilities that they currently have shifting to this person, giving them more time. They would be working with this person.
Yeah.
So right now, I think, Yacenia, you highlighted some of the responsibilities, let's say like Perkins Grant Management. Right now, each department chair does that separately at the building. Again, it's not quite as efficient as having one person manage the grant for the whole district. So some responsibilities we would see shifting to lighten the load on our current department chairs. But many of the things are new tasks that this person would be taking on and they would be working very closely with our current CTE leaders.
What I wanted to add to that, if I might, there's a cultural element where we have always supported that sometimes things will be the same at both schools and sometimes they'll be different. And it's really based on what's best for students. I think this is an area where we really need to have the same opportunities available at both buildings. And having a district, one of the advantages of having a district-level person is that we won't have situations like we have now, where we have Project Lead the Way available at Libertyville High School for engineering and we don't have it at Vernon Hills High School. That's an area where, it's an equity issue where all of our students need to have access to the same opportunities. And having someone like this, working under Dr. Sanchez, will really make sure that the pathways that are being created, the relationships that are being created out in the community, whether they're onsite or virtual opportunities, are really being offered in an equitable way at both buildings.
I'll also add this, you know, we've talked about CTE. This is not just a CTE program. It's a much broader program where the anticipation is every student has the opportunity to participate in a career pathway or maybe a multiple career pathways to really identify those things that the path that they want to take once they leave us. So it's an all-encompassing, you know, it could involve all our students and it's not just the CTE programs. It could be fine arts, it could be.
Talking about the ChemCats that the students reported on, you know, that could become a pathway in terms of food science or, you know, some of those kinds of things that students are interested in.
That goes again, an educational pathway to have a pipeline for teachers. There's so many different, it really, as Jen was saying, it's for.
So the expectation for a department chair for CTE to take on this role is not really realistic because they're just, they're working within their section. But, you know, there's a lot more to this. There's a much broader scope to what the career pathways can and should become.
And by reporting to our associate superintendent for curriculum, it gives the opportunity to make sure that where the curriculum can be updated and supported and our course catalog and our graduation requirements need to really reflect the workforce of the future, that person is working hand-in-hand with you. So where the curriculum needs to be updated from being very traditional to maybe adapting to a lot more coding and machine learning and all of the things that the workforce is going to require for our students who are in the pipeline now and who are coming to us. By having that person reporting to you at the district level, I think there's a lot of opportunities to improve at the curricular level as well as at the pathways level.
I have a student that would like to.
Yeah, please do, please do.
Personally, I think that like having a pathway would be like a great investment of the time because personally for me, I was like, over the past summer, I was looking for an internship. But like, I couldn't really find anything that easily with the help of the school. Like the CRC definitely helped, but like having a pathway and like having access to hands-on experience and just getting an idea of what you're getting yourself into, I think that's really valuable, especially when you're heading on to college. Just seeing what you're trying to major in. Like we're picking majors and we don't know what we're picking exactly. So just getting an idea, hands-on experience, shadowing people, I think it would be very valuable, so.
I'll just add, a number of us attended an event last night. And part of that event, there were some workshop sessions prior to a keynote dinner type of thing. One of those sessions was Dr. Ken Wallace from Maine Township High School District, who presented and really, and I've been sort of involved in some of this in my day work for well over a year, working with the administration team there. But Dr. Wallace really opened my eyes to a lot of opportunity that I didn't even realize, even looking at this. And it's a fascinating presentation. I'd be happy to share the link actually with any board member that would like to see that. But I know, Don, you were there.
They were amazing.
Yeah, it's just.
They're ten years ahead of us.
Yeah, yeah.
They're literally ten years.
Literally ten years ahead of us.
And I was so inspired by what they've been able to do for their students. Not only are they letting their students, starting in eighth grade, identify different paths to explore and figure out what they like and what they don't like. For those that are going on to college, their applications really stand out because they've had some really rich experiences in addition to the rigor that their curriculum provides.
And often in the field that they're interested in going into in college anyway.
Right, I mean, I always saw this more, this is broader than just the technology.
Right, correct.
This is broader. So when Maine, I'm just curious, since we're talking about it, when they implemented this, did they implement it with top-down with the district? Or did they find that it was kind of grassroots and it was being successful and it broadened into what it is now?
I believe it came out of their strategic plan and really was.
And it was a philosophical change, not just in what the career pathways are, but in how they teach. I mean, it's a sweeping plan.
And the thing that blew me away was the agency that students felt and what it did to their learning. When they're in the classroom learning, something that they now see as relevant to something that they might do. When they're in the classroom, learning something that they now see as relevant to something that they might do in the future. It changes the paradigm. That agency changes the paradigm. And I think it would be a very welcome shift as we move forward, both for students and for teachers, having this this learning environment in their classroom.
As I think about our, you know, the the concept of the multiple pathways and whatnot from our strategic plan. And then I see what they're doing. Had I, in my wildest dreams, had I envisioned our strategic plan being absolutely, you know, beyond our expectations, we're able to accomplish everything we wanted to do. That's where they are now. That's where they are now.
They they recognize that they had a problem. They had three schools that are very, very different demographically and a single district. And they felt the need to address all of the concerns of all of the students. And so that led to a strategic plan that that led them to this idea that they should be gainfully employed. Like, that's the goal. And how they're going to go about doing that is something that they could start thinking about as early as eighth grade. And then they meet a half hour a week. They built it into their schedule so that that's part of the direction that they're going. So strategic plan is is the answer to the question and it was
and again, because it's a multi-high school district, they did invest in one person to coordinate efforts among the campuses. The other thing that I just want to mention, many of the times in our district where we have started a new program, we have invested in a year of development. Most recently, the transition pathways where we said, we want to bring these students back from seed all. Here's the finances that said, you know, this is financially good and it's also going to be instructionally good for our student. We hired the director a year early so that that person could hire all the teachers, get again, all the internships and the work related experience. So I don't see it as top down or bottom up. I see it as organizational. We have to have someone who has the skills and experience to build the program. So we then can hire more teachers and get more experiences and things like that. So I think it's the design build rather than top down or bottom up.
Good question regarding the candidate pool, if you have any awareness of it, just like what's out there. I know we haven't even approved to post the position or anything, but are is there a network of individuals? Is there a pool of individuals that have this highly skilled, experienced based background that Lisa, you so eloquently stated is is really essential, I feel, not only to our board president, but I'm I'm feeling much the same, right? If we're going to invest in this, we want it to be a top notch thing from the get go. Is it going to be a challenge to find this individual to identify this person? Do these do these professionals exist en masse within a potential candidate pool? That is actually a large concern of mine because whether they exist outside of the network of people who already are here in the district or not, you know, we we have to make sure we're choosing the right person. So I don't know if you could shed light on that or what.
I I think, you know, in talking to my colleagues in in human resources, I I think it'll be a challenge. It won't be one where your your pool will be huge as maybe some other positions that we, you know, typically may draw. So we're going to have to do some networking really, and we're going to have to do some outreach on our own. We may have to reach out to some people that are in positions that may not be, again, the director at their school. They may be the coordinator at their school. But, you know, the schools that, you know, you have seen and that Dr. Sanchez listed, you know, they have been able to hire people and find people. The other challenge, the longer we wait to hire somebody, there are other schools in our same position in the area in Lake County that, you know, are going to start posting their positions, whether it's later this year, if they haven't already, or if it's next year. And so, yeah, that pool will decrease. I mean, the one thing is, when you look at District 128, we are able to attract candidates from other school districts. Whether that's a unit school district or, you know, a a school district, maybe not in the area and attract some candidates. So I think we did a good job last year of attracting candidates for our four administration positions. And, you know, really, when you look at a couple of them, they're not normal positions from your Director of Equity and Inclusion. Not every school has it. Your Director of Data and Assessment, you know, not really, you know, normal positions that every school has. There are more and more schools have those positions now and we were able to attract two good candidates for that. So.
I'm curious, John, you served on that committee. Do you have any thoughts from the recommendations and the presentation and discussion?
Thanks. I appreciate what Cara was saying about this idea of, okay, so we've we've looked at some feedback relative to culture and climate. We've looked at some feedback relative to what staff have said. Is this something that needs to be a district level position? Is this something that could be organic that kind of comes from the grassroots? And I think back on how we've done that in the past, we did that with our equity work. We had kind of in building teachers who had a passion for equity and began that work and it's built up to the point where we brought Larry in as someone who could help lead and foster that. We did the same thing with our instructional coaches. They started off as tech coaches. Back when we had the one on one to one initiative with the Chromebooks, they turned into instructional coaches in combination with literacy coaches that were all organic grassroots types of positions. We did that with our data coaches. We had a data team within. We built that program and now we have district level data person. So I think it's fair to say, could we do that again? As a building principal, I don't think so. I think this is a new enough and unique enough role and what we're asking this person to do as jumping into a district level system right off the bat and making it kind of congruent between the two buildings. There is no one in the buildings right now. You could argue that has the expertise and maybe more importantly, the time within their within their current job to be able to do this with any kind of fidelity or I think success. It would be a hodgepodge of trying to make things. And honestly, that's kind of what we've been limping around with this in the last couple of years. We've we've known this is there, but it's kind of this type of thing, like who's who's got the time and the expertise and that? Nobody. So I I think this is the right time for us to kind of all pull together, get someone at the district level. And trust me, I don't think this is someone who's going to just sit over at the district. This is going to have to be somebody who spends half their time in Vernon Hills, half their time at Libertyville, half their time in the community. But not half their time at the district office. So I I really, I I think that they need to be at the district level because they have some of this this work that has to be kind of umbrellaed in in congruent between the two, but I don't see it as a district, you know, working position. They'll be in the buildings getting this work done and I think it'll be important work.
Well, I will just add that I'm obviously no expert, but I did attend the Lake Zurich's presentation when I was at the ISB conference. And again, they're way ahead of where we are. But my sense was this cannot be a hobby job. It's got to have focus because they meet with students all the time. They help them plan things. So it's it's got to have some focused effort and I, from a timeline wise, I think we're we should have been doing this years ago. So I think we're behind.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, is it is it possible to at some point hear from one of these districts if we could coerce them to kindly ask if they would come, talk to us about how they started their program, maybe some of the pitfalls they faced.
Lisa has a new friend.
You know, I mean, this is, this is a significant investment and we want to, as a board, make sure that we have community buy in on this, that we have teacher buy in on this and hearing what other, how another district successfully did that so that we can learn from some of their, you know, nuggets of wisdom might might be very helpful. I couldn't agree more.
And I heard from District 155 this past Friday at a meeting I was at with my HR colleagues. And they're newer to it, but they, you know, have done a lot of great things. I I probably can get their presentation and share that with you, but we could probably, you know, figure out something to, you know, put type, put together, have somebody come and talk to us.
We have a CCR meeting this Friday and Lake Zurich is hosting, so I can talk to Zach about that.
I would just like to echo what Lisa said regarding the experience because I think that's going to be very important. I am, under the qualification says Illinois Professional Educator License with Administrative endorsement. How long does that take to get?
Associate Superintendent Brian Kelly.
So it it I guess it depends on their background and what they are.
So they're starting from scratch. They don't have any of the classes.
So you're talking about a non educator?
No, no, they're they're an educator. I'm looking at somebody who's like, they're currently six fifths working at a district where they're excuse me, not six fifths, three fifths. They're working three fifths on doing this career ed coordinating and they're teaching two periods. So they're a classroom level person that has experience, but they might not have their Illinois professional license yet for educator license.
So it depends if they've, you know, that's working towards their masters in
I just mean their administrative endorsement. I don't mean, so under Illinois Professional Educator License, that just means they're a certified teacher. The administrative endorsement is what I mean.
It depends if they've started a program with the masters. If they haven't started a program at the masters, typically you're talking a year and a half to two years.
It's a, it's, you know, what we used to call a type seven five.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. But I would, I would look at at that being less important than the experience.
Agreed.
And if you had a person who would commit to getting their administrative endorsement, but they had experience, I would hire that person before. I would hire somebody with no experience, but who has the administrative endorsement.
Well said.
I think it depends on the whether we anticipate this person supervising certified staff because it's
And at this point, they're not.
They're probably not. Yeah, yeah.
But I think based on what we're looking at for the future, they could be in a position to and I I would echo your sentiments. And I appreciate the question about that administrative endorsement and how long it would take and if that really is a requirement or something that somebody could gain.
So like in in the in the first year, somebody coming, they would, in in order to really evaluate staff is when they need that. So let's say, for example, that somebody's at another position in a coordinator position and they're in their first year working on their masters. We're hiring them, but they have the experience, but they're working on their masters. You know, that could, we could take that into consideration and look at, I know that has been done here in the past in in a previous position.
Sure. We've hired, lots of schools have hired Department Chairman that don't have the certificate yet.
Yeah, I think to to your point, that the focus should be on the experience in the, you know, in this this area of of you know, the the career sort of
Pathways.
Pathways kind of area versus just somebody that's happens to have a admin endorsement and teaches some class, you know, or something. I think that I think that's the point is, and to your point, Lisa, to to really get somebody with some good experience so they can hit the ground running and and really coordinate this well.
Can I just amplify Casey's point? I I couldn't believe that the universe put me in a session with Ken Wallace from District 207. I I mean,
I had not planned on attending that and my, the session I had planned on attending got canceled. So I went there by default. And again, yeah, the same thing. It's like
I was blown away by what they're doing for their students in their district. And they're they're similar to us. They have three schools instead of school. They have one school that has different demographics than the other two schools. What they have done for their students is so inspiring. And I think if our board and our teachers and our community could see the vision of what this will become nine or 10 years from now, I'm just bummed that my kids are going to be graduated and they won't have had the opportunity to go to college with this kind of experience or get the experience to know, oh, no, I don't want to go to that college. That's not the right fit for me. I already figured that out in high school. I don't have to go to college to figure that out or find myself or see what my passions are. So I really want to amplify that point, Casey, that you made. You've heard Don and Jim and I were blown away by Ken Wallace at 207 and what they've accomplished. I really think that would go a long way to helping anybody who's confused about how we could justify adding an administrator position beyond just because ISB is going to really make it hard for us not to have it. Really, what what this, what the vision and what this could become in 10 years.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I think I, so on Friday I can talk to Lake Zurich, but I can call Ken and see if he'd be willing to to come. Something tells me he would.
I think so.
So if one of us were to make a motion, we would not be making a motion to approve this. We're we're making a motion to approve the position, but we wouldn't be making, like, can we amend this so that the job description?
I've been taking good notes on the suggestions you've been making and that's, we would make those adjustments prior to post.
Yes, you you your motion would be to approve this position and then our job is to to create and amend the job description and get that posted and our our recommendation is to get this approved and that we would, Yacenia and I would work and finalize this job description and try to get it out. You know, tomorrow posted and especially when she's got, you know, a meeting coming up that we're able to start generating.
Michael moved to approve.
Before you do that.
We can still discuss.
We can still discuss. You can, anyone want a second? If something else you want to say?
No, I just wanted to be sure that before we had the motion, that if there was any other meaningful discussion that needed to be.
Well, we can discuss after the second.
I I think this is time sensitive and we have to, we have to push forward.
Move to approve the new full time director college of career readiness position. Carmichael.
Look, I need a second.
Further discussion.
Yeah. Um, not necessarily further discussion, but maybe to bring some of the parts of the discussion together. I think that the the different facets that we've looked at this position are all really helpful. That helps this board make a really thoughtful decision. I think one of the other things that we're 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 trying to manage is how we grow as an organization. And unfortunately, administrative positions usually come in half or whole time positions. And so they seem more episodic and as you're adding them, maybe oversized. One of the things that we made a commitment to during our negotiations last summer was to reduce class size for many of our sections. And in that, we committed to having 3.0 FTE additional teachers built into our budget. So that is something that we, that is an assumption we made. And we will be, you know, assuming we have a very, very similar student enrollment this year as we did last year. So we will be increasing our teaching faculty. We also last year increased our FTE among our special education staff and our social workers and other things. So I I guess the difference is when we are responding to classroom needs, it's very gradual, two tenths here, three tenths there, this program. And every year we do that audit to say, what do we need to deliver a high quality program at the classroom level or at the school counselor level? When we are saying programmatically, what are some new leaders that we need or what are some new organizations that we need? Those come in bigger chunks. And so I I just think that we have to appreciate both ways that our district can grow and to recognize that the strategic plan had all of those things, growing by professional learning, growing by program development, growing by really one or two positions. So we tried to have the plan be much more on building capacity of ourselves to do the work and very few opportunities to bring in additional administrators.
I I appreciate that point and to reduce it to my non educator level. This board has a track record of investing in both more teachers, more support staff and more administrators, not just more administrators. But you don't see that on the teaching and the the assisting side. The people who are interfacing with the students when we have these discussions or discuss administrative positions. So I appreciate that.
I I think my my concern and my hesitation was not about the role. It was about the speed at which we were moving.
Yeah.
I would say that I was thinking I was not ready to vote for it coming in, but balancing compliance with also our need for innovation, with also it being a part of our strategic plan. I mean, the compliance part now. I I see it, but my my concern was never about the role. This was always where we were going. I just felt like the speed at which we were going was too fast and it was going to be over, I mean, overwhelming for me has to be over, hopefully will not be overwhelming when we look at if you're, when when it goes down to the teacher level and the student level. I mean, the opportunities that this role is going to provide for our students is something that I hundred percent am looking forward to watching. But I think sometimes we go too fast and we have made a lot of significant changes in the last year that just wanted to kind of like chew on that for a little bit before we move on to the next. But in the, you know, to be true to competition and if there's, you know, I I can wrap my brain around it under compliance innovation, and this is a place that we wanted to be in the end.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think if we had, you know, if we had our choice, I think we would maybe go a little bit slower, but I think we're being pushed to to do this much quicker. And I think this is the end result anyway that we're ultimately going to have this role. So I appreciate where you're coming from though.
My concern was, oh, great, we're hiring another administrator.
I don't, I mean, I I don't, I I that was my initial, but it's not as simple as that.
It's not.
More about, we we've had a lot of changes in the pieces of the puzzles, right? And to add another layer. But in the end, this is going to be huge for our students so long as we are seeing they are in the buildings and they are talking to the, you know, they are touching the kids and being.
Not literally.
I gave a certain.
C C presentation earlier in the meeting.
So, you know, I I I think I'm ready, but again, I I don't want, it was never the role, it was the speed.
I agree with you.
And I hope.
I felt the same way two days ago.
And I hope anyone who has that same concern, which I think we all have when it comes to adding new administrators, they will look at the board packet and the information upon which we made this decision and and listen to this discussion that we had and and really understand that we we it it's not about rushing to add administrators. I I really hope people that have that concern will really stop and listen instead of just making assumptions or accusations because the work that came out of that committee, I think, was really important and crucial to moving this forward along with the regulation.
And John, you really pushed me over the top there.
Yeah.
I mean, I gotta tell you, at the, at that point, I was ready. Well, let's just make the motion. Let's move this forward. Because I heard you.
Any other questions, comments? I look forward to some of the additional information and I look forward to us all getting as excited as I think the three of us were after the presentation last night.
Like to participate, though, in talking to some districts. I know Lake Zurich is somebody that we met during the conference that has successfully implemented this and how, what did it look like? Because I do not think we should be reinventing the wheel. If the work is already done, let's avoid pitfalls and how, what was the best way to get buy on from all of the stakeholders?
That would be a great role for you.
A lot of questions on this one.
I I would want you to do that. I want to do it too. We can't all go, but I I I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Unless you come up with a way of bringing them here.
Bringing them here. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe to a committee meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need a roll call.
We need a roll call.
Hessel.
I.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Okay, that passes. And as usual, the Program of Personnel Committee take consumes so much time. We have one more item to quickly get through and that's an educational tour request for the Vernon Hills ISA Winter Congress in Indianapolis, Indiana. Anyone have questions or comments or do you want to?
This one did not make it to PMP. This is a new request that came in this past week. It's for our Junior State of America for Vernon Hills. It's February 17 through the 19th in Indianapolis. We have about 14 students participating with we estimate the student fee will be about $300. And there is about $4,400 that the district will cover and 3,000 of it is the bus. The buses are getting a little expensive. But yeah, that's that's that at tour.
Board member Carol Drumkey.
I would like to chaperone and I've stayed at that Marriott and it's going to be great.
Yeah, that was like a a great time.
I'd like to move to approve the educational tour request that occurred after the PMP meeting for the JSA Winter Congress in Indianapolis.
That was Hessel.
Hessel.
Carmichael second.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes and now I think it goes over to some Facilities and Finance.
Yep.
Items.
Item F, Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Uh, yeah, excited. We have our fiscal year 22 financial report there for you. We are going to have Betsy, our auditor, come to our FNF meeting in February.
But is she still traumatized from last year's February?
Nope, she's doing just fine. She's.
Should we send her flowers to get her to pass?
Thinking of you.
Still be good. I think she's visiting a a daughter somewhere. So she'll come to our committee meeting to talk through some things. So overall, overall, I guess what I would, what I would share is, you know, because of the change in in accounting for property taxes, they 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 restate last year and so and then they they changed that year. So really essentially last year, there was a operating deficit about of a million dollars, mostly due to that change in property tax thing. However, there is one thing in there that is weird that I just want you to be aware of now and I want to explain a little bit and hopefully Betsy will talk more about it too. Is if you ever get into the parts of the reports and you read interest income, it'll look like we lost 1.8 million dollars of interest income. That did not happen in real life. So we actually received like 500,000 of interest income. However, this is one, one of the things I refer to as a and there's an adjective that I'm not going to use, a bad accounting rule, not a bad one, but I don't like it. Where because of our requirement to report on gap in investments need to be reported based on fair market value as of June 30. So as of June 30, the the investments we have are all in like CDs and treasuries and these things like that that we hold to maturity and we'll never lose a penny. But the value of them, if we decided to sell them on June 30, if we decide, so essentially what it's saying is if we sold all of our investments in the secondary markets on June 30, we would have lost 1.8 million dollars. We never will do that. And so, but that was the fair market value. It's almost like, it's almost like you have a mortgage on your house and you get the assessment back and the assessment is lower than what you owe on the mortgage. It doesn't matter if you're never selling your house, like it doesn't, it never is coming to fruition. So that's just a little bit of a frustrating thing when I saw those reports come back showing that we lost money. We absolutely did not lose any money. We actually received about $500,000 in interest income last year, but because we have to report based on fair market value, that's why it's reported the way it is. So said my piece about that. And so.
Thank you.
But I'm excited that our financial reports are done. We're processing now our projections for our February committee meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report as presented?
Drumkey, so moved.
That's in second.
Oh, and one more thing. This is the first time now that you have financial reports that show our fund balance that does not include early taxes because those are all now fully deferred. So like from here going forward, there's no more fund balance. Oh, and by the way, let's take out early, it's not, it's, they're fully deferred now. So it'll be, it'll be much more clear going.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you for for bringing that to us and making us more comfortable with that. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Carol.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin. Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Board member Casey Rooney.
Okay, moving on. Item G, Vernon Hills High School Weight Room Flooring Replacement. I don't believe we had an actual number on this at the FNF committee meeting, correct?
Um, we, so, uh, first of all, I copied another item and I wrote in the wrong number. So no, this is not a million dollar weight room replacement. But if you look for your minds out, it's 52,000. So we, so, um, we, it was on the list that we was that, was that earlier this month?
Yes.
It was on the list earlier this month. Sorry, my months are running together. It was on the list earlier this month with a placeholder. And so what I did is the report you have has that updated list with new numbers that are in there. So you could see what the old number was and what the newer was. So I believe that one, we had a placeholder for like 65,000. The actual cost is 52. So that one's less, but you'll see other ones. There's ones that are a little bit more, but there's some notes attached to that as well. So I'm just going to give the the kind of the overall sense of the the three projects here. These are all under cooperative purchasing agreements. And so these are already nationally bid projects to fully comply with the law. And the each one of those has the updated, so you get a sense of kind of the total as we're going. And then I can, I'll let Mark explain each individual project.
Can I ask a procedural question first? Because all three of these fall into that. Did these go through the normal bid process? Like, are we there? I don't, I don't know why I'm lost on that, but normally we send something out to bid. We get a sheet back that says these companies bid.
Yeah, so all three of these are partial, part of national purchasing contracts. That's the cooperatives that these are already been prebids. They've already been prebid out.
And that's what I wanted to know.
Can jump on those contracts.
Thank you.
Yes, and I mentioned that FNF that I was late getting this one. They hadn't gotten me the updated numbers at that time, but I would be bringing it. We would be bringing it, you know, for tonight. And a good thing because we're under under budget for what we well, we had looked at numbers in the past. So we just looked for a motion for to approve the weight flooring. You know, it's part of summer, summer project for 2022, a contract with Direct Fitness for Vernon Hills High School for 52,462 dollars and 12 cents.
Hessel, so moved.
Batson second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Moving on to LHS Chiller Replacement, item H.
Okay. You'll see, I'm responsible for putting this one over the 1.1 million dollar budget because I wanted a contingency. And obviously the contingency is if we do run into any issues, you know, we we have it covered. Otherwise money is not spent. It comes off the contract. So same thing, this motion to approve contract for training to replace the chillers at LHS for 1,111,783 dollars. This is a turnkey project. I mean, they're doing the engineering development, it's their equipment. They're installing it, programming it, you know, to our VAS system. The whole full project through that.
Okay. And do we anticipate any trouble getting the parts or equipment on time?
Uh, no, we don't. We're anticipating it won't be done over the summer. We'll wait till the end of the cooling season. So this is a perfect time you can work in in the chiller plant and we can isolate and demo once cooling season is down. So then we have that the late fall and winter and be ready to fire it up in the spring.
But no supply chain issues to anticipate on this.
We were anticipating getting the units in the fall.
Terrific.
Carmichael moved to approve the LHS Chiller Replacement as part of the Summer 2023 Capital Projects.
Rooney second.
I just have one question with this. Do we expect to see any reduced bills? Because the equipment is more energy efficient?
Yes, well, we, this is a more energy efficient equipment. So we're expecting to see a decrease in our bills and I don't have numbers yet. We're also going to apply for comm ed refunds for us changing the equipment out and putting energy efficient in. I don't have those numbers to share, but it it could be a nice, nice amount of money.
Good question.
Great.
And it's also refrigeration.
Yeah. If they're using it is about $2,000 a pound, you know, or higher. You can get it, but it's very pricey. Get it in an emergency.
Which ironically has to be refrigerated.
Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, please. Carol.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to I, Vernon Hills High School Baseball Infield.
Yeah, so this is, again, another contract using a co-op. The baseball infield is end of its life. So we look to replace it at Vernon Hills. So we look for a motion to the contract with Field Turf to replace the baseball field at Vernon Hills for 212,152 and 86 cents.
Hessel, so moved.
Drumkey second. All right, any other discussion on that one? It's going to be a nice logo, nice infield. Yeah. I might have to catch a game. Uh, roll call, please, Carol.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to J, disposal of equipment. Uh, looks like we have a few things that need to be disposed of and can I get a motion to approve the items for disposal?
Carmichael, so moved.
Batson second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. And that concludes the Facilities and Finance items.
Terrific. We will turn it over to Dr. Herman for the superintendent's report.
Yes, I see some of the students are needing to go and I appreciate you staying and participating in the meeting. And I also want to thank you because the surveys that you are doing of your peers feed directly into this particular initiative. We have with our Labor Management Committee, Dr. Sanchez will be working with some teachers and some special education coordinators to look at what are the things that worked well during our December exam schedule and what are some of the things that we know we can do even better? In the background information, I described some of the things that you all described too, from 2019 until now, we've had four different schedules because of COVID. And some of them being remote and other things like that. So we definitely have have had some adjustments and flexibility and appreciate student and staff patience as we navigate through this. But your voice will definitely be brought forward. So we have a committee that will be meeting next week. They are going to meet two times and then they'll be forwarding a recommendation to administration on really trying to find the schedule that will meet most of the needs that we're identifying. So the idea of having exams spread out over more days, but we're also held accountable to minutes of instruction on each day from ISBE. So we have some things that are at polarity with each other. We also know that some of our students had a difficult time who are eligible for extended time. And so we want to make sure that we're building in cushions on our day for things like that, too. So we feel that between student input and staff input, we'll be able to bring and recommend the final exam schedule at the February PMP meeting.
Which will answer the question, do second semester seniors have to take finals in classes where they have an A?
I vote no.
That we're not voting on that. That's not for us to vote on. I we look forward to the recommendation.
I also like one of the ideas I think the students had where can the teaching be completed? I also like one of the ideas I think the students had where can the teaching be completed with enough time where students can actually study before the exam? Because I think I've run into that at home myself, so.
Well, and I think that, again, not that the grading and assessment committee can answer all questions, but I do think that having guidelines like that would be one of the benefits of recommendations coming from that committee.
One more thing we forgot to add. We don't want to have finals on a Wednesday and a Thursday. We would rather have them beginning of the week. That was a popular comment. We just forgot to include it, but because having them at the end of the week was not helpful.
Okay.
Good to know. Thank you for adding that.
And we're happy to share that data with the committee if that's convenient.
Oh, apps. I was I was counting on that. So for sure. So you can send it to Dr. Sanchez and myself.
Board President Lisa Hassel.
Thank you. Moving on to board comments and events. As you've already heard, uh, John Jim and I uh and also Cara Benjamin attended the Ed Redd dinner last night. You've already heard. I think the most meaningful takeaway for us, was there anything that you wanted to add beyond that session that we attended?
No, it's always lovely to go and kind of see what's happening in uh, you know, that end of our professional world and um always enlightening. I enjoyed the keynote speaker, although I think we do a fabulous job with branding already. But I I found what uh she had to say interesting and useful.
And we had to sit with the Senator Adrian Johnson.
That was, that was actually extremely enlightening.
Really a treat and she's really uh impressive and it was really a um wonderful opportunity to um strengthen our relationship that Dr. Herman has really solidified with her.
And we get, we got to sit with her last year as well. So for those of us who got to chat with her again, it's always welcome.
We also learned that she was recently named as the chair for the education committee. Um, so.
Today was she named? She was she.
Well, she said last night that she was going to be.
So I think today they were announcing the committees for um the hundred and third Congress. So
Thank you for the.
That is, that is such great. That's a great point. It was great news that she shared that that she'd been on the education committee and uh had shared it before and was planning to continue. So.
Yay.
That's a great resource for us. Any other um events or training?
I did go to a session on um the uh free speech in the digital age, uh, which was interesting. And the idea that we can restrict speech, there's, there's just none of it. There there's very few cases where districts are successful at saying that they can, they can regulate or stop speech, especially on digital platforms and especially outside of school. Um, that the courts have favored uh students' rights and parents' rights to express their opinions. And if they are not similar to our opinions, it doesn't matter. You don't have to like them.
I would agree. I think one of the other things that I read an article on last week was that is true when it's opinion, but as soon as it goes into bullying and harassment.
Absolutely.
Or hate speech. So I I think that everyone has the right to express their perspective, but going back to our opening presentation about safety and security and building relationships, it 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 goes from right to express to needing to protect individuals.
And the uh ability to limit teachers and staff when they are doing performing their duties. We have a very strong case law that supports um restricting free speech in that specific environment. Okay, um, any other board comments or events we want to discuss?
Uh, I attended um the Libertyville High School Jazz Festival on Thursday night, last Thursday. Um, took my kids. I've got a small clarinet player in my house, so it was a great thing to take him to to kind of see what's to come if he continues. But I think what was so great about the Jazz Festival is not only did it showcase um our uh our jazz lab band and our jazz ensemble over at LHS, but it also gave um well, at least us as as an audience, um, the opportunity to see the feeder schools, some of our feeder schools uh and how they kind of work their way up to this incredible level of performance that our high school students have. So we got to see the Oak Grove School Jazz Band perform as well as Highlands Jazz Band perform. Um, and then, like I said, the Jazz Lab Ensemble, I'm sorry, the Jazz Lab Band and the Jazz Ensemble. And um they also had um, I guess the students were able to work with a visiting professor who was a guest artist. His name is Dr. Matt Pivak. And um incidentally, was it, were you, did you happen to catch the show?
I wasn't at the show, but I I'm aware of the guest artist.
I can't remember if it was uh Mr. Voight or Mr. Carnstead's um former professor, but he came to work with the students during the week and even played along with them at the performance. So not only did we get to see our students perform, but we got to see bona fide professional uh jazz artist. And so it was wonderful, but I just wanted to shout out to Dustin Helvey, our fine arts supervisor over at LHS. Uh, Mr. Ben Voight, uh, who was the Jazz Lab Band Director uh and Mr. Matt Carnsette, who directed the Jazz Ensemble. And I we just, we so enjoyed it. And like I always say, anytime I per, anytime I'm able to attend a fine arts performance, either here at Vernon Hills or at Libertyville High School, I'm reminded just how we have world-class fine arts uh education available to our kids and that we are just so lucky to enjoy it as members of the community.
I thank you for attending and um it is a really um a proud tradition that when we do our festivals, so we have a choir festival, a band festival, an orchestra festival and the jazz festival. We do partner with our um middle schools and um we invite a guest conductor to each one of those who's either really well established. Well, it's both. Usually they're very well established in the field um professionally and they have some connections to our community as well. Um, and so um you saw the jazz that was our fourth in our series and um thank you for recognizing the tremendous talent of the students and the tremendous work of the staff because um in my opinion, it is second to none.
Yes, I could have sworn I wasn't in a high school auditorium. I was somewhere else. It was great.
Thank you for sharing. Um, moving on to the IASB report.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Some of you um may have seen a um noticed that uh Tom Bertrand, who's the executive director for uh IASB, has now been um hired as the executive director for the Consortium of State School Boards Associations. Say that three times real quick. Uh, or COSPA, CASPA, whatever. It's the new national organization that are that IASB belongs to. So we're gonna have a lot of Illinois influence on the national organization. I have I hopes for that. I know we typically haven't been as involved in the the national organization in the past, but twenty-three states in this past year spun off and created a new national uh School Board Association organization at a national level. Their inaugural uh conference is um coming up at the end of March. Uh, and while it's probably a little late for us to attend that at this point, uh, you know, maybe we can uh look at uh future years to maybe participate in that, depending on where that's located. But just wanted to bring that to your attention uh for the um, the national uh organization. Uh, also um on Fri- on Saturday, February eleventh, Libertyville High School will be hosting a legislative breakfast. So legislators are from the area are invited to attend and any IS IASB member school can send, you know, board members, uh administrators, whatever, to participate in that. That happens uh on the the morning of February eleventh. So I'm happy to be able to.
The time of that.
Breakfast starts at eight thirty.
And it concludes at?
At about uh probably about ten. The the program will start about nine.
So if any of our members that were attending, they could actually stick around because that's for the best buddies carnival after that.
Yeah, I put it in my calendar, too. Who wasn't to talk about best buddies? It, yeah.
Yeah.
That's gonna be that same day. I put it in my calendar at the same time when you were talking about.
And forwarded it.
Yeah, so if any uh any board members wants to uh attend, uh, let Carol know because we have to register and there's a small fee to attend, but just wanted to shout out to uh LHS for uh helping us host that uh on behalf of the Lakes Division. This is a Lakes Division uh uh initiative that we're trying to do. We did them in the past and we felt that uh this might be a good time to reenact this type of uh of event. So.
And we appreciate your leadership on the Lakes Division Board. Do you have any sense of which legisla- which legislators might have committed to attending yet?
I don't. Uh, I do know Adrian may uh come at the very beginning, but can't stay for the the presentation. I spoke to her last night about it, but she was gonna try to at least, you know, stop by and say hello, but I know she's not able to, but I don't know who else will be. And that's all I have for IASB.
Okay, terrific. Um, do we have any other reports for tonight before we conclude? Then I will be looking for a motion to adjourn. Uh, sorry, to convene.
Future agenda.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Future agenda items. I'm getting ahead of myself. We have noted on the agenda some items that we'll be seeing in uh February as well as March. Um, are there any items that board members wish to bring forward for future agenda items that do not appear on this list?
I have one question. Uh, back when the students had come to talk about the Diwali holiday, there was an action taken just to look at calendars and what should the approach be and secular or not and all of that. So just wanted to see when we can get an update.
Superintendent Denise Herman.
Um, I know that we are working with our equity team on that. Do you have a a specific update, yes, any?
Yes, so Larry um looked at um many districts in the state and there are none that recognize Diwali yet. So um we're um hoping to collaborate with our feeder districts and kind of um work on here. Here are the things that we're recognizing. Can we come to an agreement and then bring a full recommendation?
I know that we had discussed perhaps developing some standards by which we would use for requests, um because I know certainly there are other holidays that students might um ask us to recognize, including Diwali. I I hope that that will be part of the conversation because the, from an equity standpoint, I I'm sure that you and Larry have already gone down this road, but we want to have a set of standards to apply um as opposed to it appearing subjective, like this group gets it, but this group doesn't. That that really isn't the position that we ever want to be in. And I know a lot of school districts have gone to a completely non-holiday calendar and I have a sense that that might be where we're all headed. Certainly would look to, you know, the team for recommendations on that. But but I hope that developing some standards by which we will um evaluate this and other requests could be developed as part of the conversation, just so that our choices don't appear in any way subjective.
Yeah, I thought that was kind I thought that was kind of what I was looking forward to is how do you make that decision? So any update on that would be would be great.
Thank you. Okay, so now I will look for a motion to adjourn, sorry, to convene an executive
Close session.
In closed session for the purpose uh of discussing employment of an employee under uh section five ILCS one twenty slash two C one.
Carmichael so moved.
Rooney second.
Thank you. We are um going to convene session and when we return. Oh, sorry, we have to do roll call. I'm really tired, obviously.
I.
Okay.
Cole Carney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Thank you.
Hi.
Motion uh carries and we are uh going to convene in closed session. When we return to open session, no further action will be taken. And at that point, we will adjourn. Thank you.
To ask for a motion and a second to return to open session.
So moved.
At eleven seventeen PM.
Drumkey.
So moved.
Rooney second.
Uh, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. May I now have a motion and a second to adjourn the board meeting at eleven seventeen?
Michael so moved.
Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We are adjourned.